Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 regular session of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Wilder, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Girl Scout Troop Number 9200.
I invite you to join me in thoughtful prayer in each of our personal spiritual traditions. Creator of the universe, we pause before we begin our deliberations today to give thanks, express gratitude, and to ask for your supreme guidance. Once again, we find ourselves enmeshed in the holiday season, sharing centuries of old traditions and welcoming the season of new beginnings. As we journey to the end of this year, inspire us to show compassion and outreach for those in need, and help us to avoid being distracted by our own needs so we do not forget the wider web of life in our community and beyond. Grant us the wisdom to make prudent decisions amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Grant us the compassion and ability to work together in harmony. Grant us the empathy to hear the voices of the people we serve. And grant us a clear understanding of the needs of our community. Bless the work before City Council today and all the citizens in our community in generosity of spirit, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Great job. I am going to come down and give you all your certificates. So, they actually get certificates for participation. And we also have a couple of other recognitions that I'll do while I'm down there as well. So... Thank you ladies for being here. These are certificates of recognition presented to each of your members of Girl Scout Troop 9200 and leading the pledge of allegiance of these numbers, 2019 Lynchburg City Councilman Claudia Warren. Lucy Asher. Charlotte Essent. Savannah Essent. Very good. Miriam Boyers. Alexis Day. We'll take her up here. Okay. Haley Day. Okay. Aubrey Hopkins. Okay. Ellery Mclemore. There we go. Carolyn Pollard. Caroline Pollard. Okay. Oh, very good. I'm sorry. Tell them they feel better. Briel Ramirez. Claire Terry. And Eva Wilson. All right. Do we have a picture opportunity? Is that... I think? All right. Y'all want to get in really close? They don't like each other? There we go. Here we go. Thank you very much. Thank you. You're always welcome to stay, but your bedtimes will probably be before we get out of here. So... All right. Next, we have recognitions. First is for Chris Adams, Lynchburg Fire Department. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please come up. Chris Adams is receiving the Governor's EMS Provider of the Year Award. For more than 30 years, the Virginia Office... For those Chris Adams, let's... There we go. So, everyone knows which one is Chris Adams. Thank you, everyone, for being up here. For more than 30 years, the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services has been honoring emergency medical service providers and agencies in the Commonwealth for their outstanding contributions to the health and well-being of the citizens they serve. On November 9th, 2019, Captain Chris Adams became the recipient of the Governor's Award for Outstanding Pre-Hospital Provider in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Chris was selected by his peers and state officials for this award from nominations that were received from 11 regions across the state. Chris is a 25-year veteran of the department and is an advanced practice paramedic EMS supervisor in the Operations Division. In addition to his supervisory role as a paramedic, Chris is involved with many initiatives in the department, including performing as a preceptor, developmenter, and instructor, coordinating ambulance fleet replacement, grants purchasing, and development of equipment maintenance and agreements to assist the department in being more fiscally responsible. Chris has also contributed to our community in many other ways. He participates in patient navigation as a partner with Department of Social Services and CENTRA to ensure our citizens receive follow-up services that are needed to improve their overall outcome. Chris also represents the Fire Department on several patient care committees at CENTRA, volunteers in Amherst County, and was a flight paramedic on CENTRA-1. Chris is the kind of role model and leader that makes our organization and community strong. He never turns down an opportunity to improve a program or process and is always seeking to provide meaningful assistance and feedback to improve services. He is an incredibly dedicated and steadfast provider that members of the Lynchburg Fire Department can regularly turn to for guidance and support. The contributions that Chris has made to our community through his compassionate generosity and leadership is tremendous. Our community should know that of the thousands of EMS providers across the state, the city of Lynchburg is served by incredibly dedicated, professional, and skillful EMS providers, and Chris is among the best. Congratulations, Chris, on your award, and it is well deserved.
I was nudging Chris the whole time, trying to get him to come up here. Good evening, everybody. I'm Greg Worms. I'm the fire chief for the city. But most importantly, I represent the great men and women who do great work and provide a great service to you all every day. And so, for that, I'm very thankful for the great work that they do and the great leadership that Chris provides to many of our staff members. Just a brief note about the kind of person that he is today. When we called him to find out what he was wearing tonight to the ceremony, he said, "Of course, I'm wearing my Class A." He said, "That's the most professional thing I could do." I said, "Absolutely. I wouldn't think anything less of Chris and his professional demeanor, his attitude, and the ways that he serves our community." So, Chris, once again, thank you very much for what you do for us.
All right. Sure, if you don't have any words...
No, I don't. Thank you.
He just saves lives, that's all. But thank you so much for everything you do. All right. Pictures? Anyone need a picture of us? Thank you very much. Congratulations again. All right. Next, we are going to be recognizing our Digital Cities Awards. So, if Mr. Getz would come forward. Mr. Mike Getz is Director of our Information Technology. And every year, the city participates in the National Digital Cities Survey conducted by the Center for Digital Government. This survey ranked cities across the country for how they utilize information technology to serve their citizens and improve the efficiency and effectiveness of their local government operations. The city of Lynchburg has received first place in its population category of 75,000 to 124,000. This is the 16th consecutive year the city of Lynchburg has been in the national top 10 and the fourth time it has been ranked first in its population category. The other winners in 2019 are San Diego, California, Miami, Florida, Norfolk, Virginia, and Weston, Florida. As noted in the press release by the Center for Digital Government, the top digital cities this year are taking the IT departments far beyond the role of service provider. They're exploring creative ways to leverage their technology investments and redefining the role of the public sector technology leader at the city level. Lynchburg's recognition is largely due to efforts to increase resiliency, including cybersecurity, to expand the mobile workforce, to improve interdepartmental collaboration, and its use of social media to engage and inform citizens. So, Mr. Getz, thank you for all of the leadership that you provide, and here is your Digital Cities Award. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
One more thing. Thank you for all of your dedicated service to the city of Lynchburg. Mr. Getz will soon be retiring.
Yes.
Mr. Getz will be retiring February 1st. And when he shared with me his retirement, he said he wanted to go out on top, and indeed he is. Very good. Yes.
I just want to offer two thoughts. One is, as proud as we are of this award, it's nowhere near the level of EMS of the Year. So, congrats to our brethren in the Fire Department. But I would say I had the honor to go to San Antonio two weeks ago to accept this award for the city, and I was very proud to represent our city and want to thank City Council and city administration publicly for their support in what they do to use technologies to improve the operations of our government and to serve citizens. So, this is really a reflection on the entire city organizations. I just want to publicly thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have recognition of two of our Mayor's Youth Council members. So, this is your opportunity to shine and stand up now. So, the Mayor's Youth Council is made up of student representatives from across the city in both public and private schools, and they actually do several events each month throughout the community. They are asked to come to city council meetings to learn more about what we do as a council. So, first, I'll introduce John. John Tharp was born and raised in Lynchburg, Virginia, and is a new member of the Mayor's Youth Council. He is 16 years old. John, raise your hand. There we go. So, everyone will know. He is 16 years old and currently a junior at Virginia Episcopal School, where he is a member of the cross-country and tennis teams, as well as a participant in the Winter Musical. He loves archery and is his two dogs. John is a huge cinema and television... And this is John's word on the paper, nerd. I wouldn't have said that. Okay. Which has led to an interest in the field of communications. John also enjoys spending time with friends and watching movies with his family. John decided to apply for Mayor's Youth Council because he has always had an interest in politics and how government works. He wanted an experience that would answer the political questions he has while also helping him to learn about and participate in city situational planning. He loves his hometown and how it operates, from public parks to citywide events, and he wanted an opportunity to help change our city for the better. One issue that he has seen get tons of media coverage is substance abuse in teenagers. John would like to stop teens from abusing drugs and alcohol in our city by offering citywide seminars about the consequences and downsides of substance abuse and usage. John is very excited to be a part of the Lynchburg Mayor's Youth Council, and he looks forward to some awesome experiences helping our community. So, thank you, John. And next, we have Teddy Tharp. Is a 14-year-old freshman at, again, VES. He was born in Lynchburg and has lived here his whole life. He joined the Mayor's Youth Council because he wanted to help our wonderful city out. He is really hoping to raise money for a lot of important causes. He hopes that the Mayor's Youth Council does something related to youth sports, as sports have played a huge role in his childhood. He has been involved with a lot of youth sports team in his years. He is happy to be here and believes the Mayor's Youth Council will do great things. Thank you, Teddy, for being here tonight. All right. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearings, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is the Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. First is consideration of approving the minutes of the November 7 council retreat and consideration of approving the minutes of the November 2 meeting. May I have a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Second.
The motion has been moved to second. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next are our public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Our procedures, I'll read. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Number nine is public hearing regarding the petition of Humankind for a conditional use permit at 150 Linden Avenue to allow the construction of recreational facilities, including athletic fields, swimming pool, and parking areas in an R1 low-density residential district. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and I'll turn to Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the property is zoned R1 low-density residential and has been used by Presbyterian Homes, also known as Humankind, to serve children and families since 1903. Recreational facilities are permitted in the R1 district upon approval of a conditional use permit. The property is recommended for institutional land uses on the city's future land use map. These uses include the city's religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities. In 2018, Humankind submitted a petition to rezone the property to IN1 Institutional District 1. This zoning designation would have been in compliance with the city's future land use map and the adjacent zoning of Westminster/Canniberry. Humankind ultimately withdrew this petition after neighborhoods... Neighbors expressed concern and indicated that the conditional use permit process may be the more appropriate way for council to have additional input on the development of this property. On June 4th, 2019, Humankind submitted a site plan that proposed the construction of a new access road to the campus from VES Road in the vicinity of Pine Drive. This access road is currently in review by the city engineer and is not subject to any city public hearing processes. While not directly tied to this petition, the new access road would address previous concerns raised by the neighborhood citing traffic accessing the campus through the neighborhoods of Linden Avenue. The city engineer did not require a traffic study or analysis for this proposal, as the athletic fields are unlikely to generate additional traffic beyond normal events that are currently held on the campus. Stormwater management plans will be required prior to any final site plan approvals, and the submitted concept plan indicates the development of three stormwater facilities for the development. Humankind has voluntarily requested that restrictions be placed upon the development of the proposed facilities. These restrictions are included as conditions of approval for council's consideration. The first is compliance with the submitted site plan: no lighting or illumination of the athletic fields, no buildings or structures within 100 feet of the shared boundary line with Westminster/Canniberry, no more than two synthetic turf athletic fields, no illuminated electrical scoreboards, no bleachers or stands associated with the fields. There'll be no public address or amplified sound systems. There'll be no freestanding gymnasiums, no buildings to house a swimming pool. During youth sports netting, she'll be installed in order to retain balls within the athletic field area. The petitioner does desire to provide lighting for the proposed parking lots to address safety concerns. The city zoning ordinance does have lighting standards that should address any issues from lighting of the parking areas. The Plan Division conduct... I'm sorry. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on November 13 and recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined in the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone here to make a presentation?
My name is Bob Dandy, and I am the president of Humankind, and would like to thank each of you for your service. This has been a long and winding road, but I'm excited to be here tonight. Thank you to Tom Martin, City Planning, other members of their staff. I'm here on behalf of our board, our staff, our volunteers, people who support us in the community, to share this revised plan based on input that we heard from neighbors, that we heard from Planning Commission, and that we heard specifically from several of you, asking that we address a few important items. One was access to the campus. One was the type of application we brought, CUP versus institutional. And another one was to make sure that we retained some of the accommodations, even though they're not required in a CUP. And we've done all of those things. For those who don't know, Presbyterian Homes was founded in 1903, and in 1923, the property was laid out in a master plan by Charles Gillette, one of the most famous landscape architects in America, thought to be the father of southern landscape architecture. And in that plan, he envisioned sports fields, he envisioned tennis courts, he envisioned swimming pools, he envisioned gardens and places for people to play outside. And in the earliest days and wisdom of the founders of the home, they have writings in their minutes and writings in their founding papers that talk about the importance of play to children, being every bit as important as what they would learn in the classroom or what they would be provided through the social services within the community. So, I ask tonight that you help us move this application forward to see this 100-year-old dream come to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dandy. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Colin Byrne. I live here in the city of Lynchburg. I'm here because I think that the city should embrace this opportunity. Humankind is going to create two athletic fields that, quite frankly, the city doesn't have. I've been involved in youth lacrosse for the past five years, and athletic fields has been a challenge. And as we all know, after the flood with College Lake that took the athletic field at Blackwater totally out of play, which is actually the second time that has occurred in the past five years. We had to use another field four years ago. And I think this is something that should be embraced because it's a private organization that is providing something for the youth in Lynchburg that is not there right now. Quite frankly, Humankind, I think, is an asset to this community, and I think the city should embrace this particular request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hello. My name is David Kerr. I live at 140 Linden Avenue. I spoke a few times before when this came up for the rezoning, and basically, I have the same concerns. And those concerns are, I keep being told, both by Humankind and by the city as well, that this is not going to affect traffic on Linden Avenue. And I... Considering that half of the people that work at Humankind come through Linden Avenue, and I have to dodge them every day on the way to work, I find that hard to believe. I just want to say that I'm not necessarily opposed to the project, but things that I spoke on before when it came up for rezoning, Humankind has offered all kinds of proffers that address issues on the Westminster side. Now, I have met with Ashley Carroll from Humankind. She actually came to my house to address the concerns, and I thought we were having... moving in a good direction. And basically, I was told a bunch of things and kind of promised a few things that I even brought up, but were never brought up as a proffer or anything. And I wasn't able to make it to the Planning Commission meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I was actually very surprised and happy to see that many of the concerns that I had were actually addressed at that meeting. And there were many things that were suggested that could address the things, but the thing that I've always... that I've asked since the rezoning is why Humankind will say those things, but they never will put it in a proffer to mitigate the concerns on the neighborhood side. As far as the traffic goes, I saw where they... Someone talked about putting... They talked about changing the address once that access is... Once that access road is complete, to make it to where they don't have to come down Linden, I think that's great. Also, the... Talked about putting a gate on the bridge. I think that's... I like that as well.
Thank you. If you could wrap up your thoughts in three minutes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was gonna put all this together, and like, this... Sorry. I was... The whole time, I've been fighting, trying to just get in here. But, um, traffic is a huge concern. Lights and noise, there are a bunch of things that I've been told, either in person and at the meeting. I'm just trying to figure out why they can't put the gates, the proffer, the address change, the timers and covers with the lights.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask that you...
And the proffers as well.
All right. And your comments. Thank you for that.
Yeah. But can I just say?
Well, I can't because the three minutes are up. So, I'll give you one, and that's it.
I'm really trying to figure out why the CUP is being considered without the access road. That makes absolutely no sense.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm John Bruce. I live at 1111 VES Road, or my wife and I do. And I'm speaking more to address the traffic on VES Road than I am the project. I think all the proffers they made have helped the project, but there will be a lot more traffic on VES Road. We live kind of at the peak. It should come from Humankind, from VES School. Once you crest the hill, that's where our driveway is, and traffic boots fast on VES Road. Traffic studies may show the traffic count will be bad, but that's not how people drive on the road. They drive pretty fast. School buses, drive fast, city buses. Anyway, we have to roll our windows down. We don't do it this way. We push a button, and the window comes down. But we have to listen for traffic. So, it is a problem. Also, VES Road is banked very poorly. You've heard from Doris Perry in the past, and Doris, I think, sent a letter or sent some pictures, but a few weeks ago, she had her car in her front yard, took out a telephone pole, took power out for a day, and that's simply because cars coming from the other direction. As they're around the curve, it banks wrong, and they fall into her driveway or in her yard. So, what I'm asking you to do, as you consider really the new road they're gonna put in, that the city study VES Road, how traffic uses that road and how to improve it. We recently were in Charlotte. There's a big mall in inner city, and one of the major roads, at least, that mall has little traffic bumps. And there were many things that were suggested that could address the things, but the thing that I've always, that I've asked since the rezoning is why Humankind will say those things, but they never will put it in a proffer to mitigate the concerns on the neighborhood side. As far as the traffic goes, I saw where they, someone talked about putting, they talked about changing the address, once that access is, once that access road is complete, to make it to where they don't have to come down Linden. I think that's great. Also, the, talked about putting a gate on the bridge. I think that's, I like that as well.
Thank you. If you could wrap up your thoughts in three minutes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was gonna put all this together, and like, this, sorry, I was, the whole time I've been fighting, trying to just get in here. But, um, traffic is a huge concern, lights and noise. There are a bunch of things that I've been told, either in person and at the meeting. I'm just trying to figure out why they can't put the gates, the proffer, the address change, the timers and covers with the lights.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask that you.
And all of that in the proffers as well.
All right. And your comments. Thank you for that.
Yeah. But can I just say?
Well, I can't, because the three minutes are up. So I'll give you one, and that's it.
I'm really trying to figure out why the CUP is being considered without the access road. That makes absolutely no sense.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm John Bruce. I live at 1111 VES Road, where my wife and I do. And I'm speaking more to address the traffic on VES Road than I am the project. I think all the proffers they made have helped the project, but there will be a lot more traffic on VES Road. We live kind of at the peak. It should come from Humankind, from VES School. Once you crest the hill, that's where our driveway is, and traffic moves fast on VES Road. Traffic studies may show the traffic count will be bad, but that's not how people drive on the road. They drive pretty fast. School buses, drive fast, city buses. Anyway, we have to roll our windows down. We don't do it this way. We push a button, and the window comes down. But we have to listen for traffic. So it is a problem. Also, VES Road is banked very poorly. You've heard from Doris Perry in the past, and Doris, I think, sent a letter or sent some pictures, but a few weeks ago, she had her car in her front yard, took out a telephone pole, took power out for a day, and that's simply because cars coming from the other direction, as they're around the curve, it banks wrong, and they fall into her driveway or in her yard. So what I'm asking you to do, as you consider really the new road they're gonna put in, that the city study VES Road, how traffic uses that road and how to improve it. We recently, we're in Charlotte. There's a big mall in inner city, and one of the major roads, at least, that mall has little traffic bumps, keeps traffic down about 25 miles an hour. If you go faster than that, you're gonna not do well. The big wide bumps that slow you down. I think something like that should be considered for VES Road. Caution lights, for those of us that have blind driveways, mirrors, the way we see something coming. Anything you could do that would help, I think, would be great. And so I think, again, as you're addressing, the new road they put in, and I agree with our other neighbor, that, to me, it makes sense to consider the road being put in with the CUP, because if the road doesn't get in properly, I don't know that the CUP makes sense. But anyway, that's all I've got, and I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? All right. If there is no one else, there's the opportunity for rebuttal. And so if there's anyone who would like to make a rebuttal.
Thank you. I do want to share that I appreciate that most of the comments are related to traffic. And if you have watched the Planning Commission, we have agreed that we will change our physical address to a VES Road number. So we, first of all, know that that will allow us to change the algorithm in Google Maps, which you cannot do without changing your address. As long as it says Linden Avenue, it continues to send people, even if we write them, petition them, provide them a lot of information. So that's number one. Number two, we will consider carefully the possibility of putting a crash bar on the other end, on Linden Avenue. We would like to hear more feedback from neighbors, as we do think some folks do enjoy having access to the campus from that side, but we will consider that. As you've heard, the road itself is not a CUP item. It is something that we are committed to in writing, to completing before we build these next elements. So we have a proposal from a contractor in town, and that work should begin in either March, April, or May, to construct the new entrance onto the campus. And so if there aren't any other questions, I'd be happy to come back if you need me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dandy. The public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with council. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilmember Hegelston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. The motion has been made and second for approval. Is there further discussion?
Yeah. I appreciate the diligence. I appreciate the patience of Humankind, which lots of you who are familiar with it, as was mentioned, was the Presbyterian Homes, the home for orphaned children, all the way back to 1902. They have been there, serving children. I appreciate Mr. Byrne and his direction with regarding the fields. I appreciate what they're gonna be doing for lots of children and sports. As I look at this petition, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that there are 10 conditions on there. I mean, conditions that say no more than two athletic fields. I mean, as Mr. Byrne stated, I mean, we have very good needs for athletic fields. I realize you've worked lots of things out with the neighbors, but normally, when there are conditions on someone's property, it's kind of not nice to have all these conditions, no electronic scoreboards, no bleachers or stands, no P.A. system. Lots of these things, I think, could be very small in nature, if they're having an event, but I guess you guys have agreed to lots of these things. But I've rarely have ever seen 10 different conditions placed on something that has been there since 1902, been serving children, been serving the athletic and play needs of children since 1902, and now, because it can, having 10 different conditions on every little micro-management of their day-to-day activity. I'd like to see some of those removed, if possible, but I guess they've all agreed to them, and the resolution is with those in as they stand. I do appreciate what you guys have done. And so I think lots of folks in the neighborhood, I'm glad to hear that you're working on the entrance, because some of the neighbors have mentioned that over the time, as far as the traffic and whatnot. I appreciate it, and I wish you the best of luck.
Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, I think this is an effort and a lot of work between the interested, excuse me, parties involved in this, and there's certainly some compromises, some give and take. Yeah, this has been very concerning to a lot of neighbors. I think that with the proffers that have been submitted, that a lot of those concerns are alleviated. I will ask Mr. Martin a quick question, though. Mr. Martin, is there any linkage between this letter of commitment about building the road to the CUP, or how does the city view that? I appreciate that they sent something to the city in writing.
The CUP, the CUP is not directly tied to the construction of the road, so to address, I guess what you're asking is, if they did not build the road, could they still build the athletic fields? And the answer is yes. I have no belief, I have no reason to believe that they would do that, but technically, that could occur. And I do, if I may, the conditions outlined in the resolution were presented by Humankind. They were not recommended by staff, and they are probably the most restrictive I've seen on an athletic field. And that was done entirely to address concerns of the neighborhood.
So you do have, in writing, a commitment from Humankind to put, that they fully intend and plan to put in that road?
I would have to go through the file, but they have submitted the plan for it, yes.
I just want to get clarification on that point. If you all could, is there a letter of commitment? Would you come to the microphone, please?
Thank you.
My name is Hank Creasy. I'm a lawyer with Woods Rogers. I also happen to be the board chair for Humankind. Since Humankind came before this council about a year ago, it's spent a lot of effort, I think, as Councilman Hegelston noted, to try to resolve issues with our neighbor, in particular Westminster Canterbury. So as a part of that resolution, Humankind is committed to build this road. It's not a condition of the CUP, because it's not a governmental process, but it is a commitment that Humankind has made with our neighbor. So as part of that, there are conditions to that commitment, including a price for building this road. But that process has taken place, and there's been a price given from a reputable contractor, and we fully anticipate that the road construction will begin and will be completed, so that these fields can be built. And if the road is not built, the fields will not be built.
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Creasy. So from the board chair, I feel very good about what you've said. Thank you. I appreciate you making that point. Do you have a comment?
I do. Mr. Creasy, sure.
Would you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up with that, the last time we discussed this, the access was gonna focus on the Westminster Canterbury existing right away. And everybody went back into the drawing board and put their heads together and came up with what we now see tonight. I assume that if you built the project as a CUP, but did not build the new road to VES Road, is any likelihood that Westminster Canterbury would let you use their easement as access, leaving you only with Linden?
As part of this commitment with our neighbor, the easement area will be released in place, will be put a new road. So that land that is currently subject to deed to easement would return to Westminster Canterbury, and Humankind would have a new entrance to its property entirely on land owned by Humankind.
So there's a built-in safety in this, that if you don't build that road, you don't get a project, because you can't use Westminster's.
We make private commitment not to build the fields unless we build this road.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy.
Councilmember Perrow?
Yes, sir.
We mentioned that council grants a conditional use permit. If the activity that's permitted becomes a nuisance, council does have the authority to go through a process and revoke the permit. So, I mean, council has done that once before in the past. So if they would not put in the road, and traffic would become a problem and pose a nuisance to the neighborhood, then council could take back the conditional use permit, so.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
A question for Mr. Creasy.
Oh, okay. Go right ahead.
No, well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to finish up my comments unless somebody else has a question for Mr. Creasy.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. So I'm obviously in support of this, and Madam Manager, I think it would be very wise to take a look at VES Road in a future capital planning exercise, as well as Williams Road, too, because I think both of those roads could stand a little bit of improvement, a little bit of safety improvements. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilder, do you have something?
Yes. I just want to thank Humankind for the work they do in our community, and also for listening to the concerns of the citizens, especially with Westminster, and addressing a lot of those concerns. I really appreciate that. I do want to encourage you to listen to the other comments about Linden Drive. If I could address some of their concerns, and make sure that we're addressing some of the concerns of the gentleman for Linden Drive, because there is a kind of a hard interest to get into. I've driven that way, so it's really kind of challenging. So if they could address those concerns, that'd be wonderful to do that. But thank you for all the concessions that you've made to work with the neighbors to address those issues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further comments? Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
I just have a couple of brief things. One, there's no question, as has been said, that the availability of this athletic facility will dramatically increase the ability of youth sports in Lynchburg. And the good part is, it is being funded by a private entity on land that's already tax-exempt, so it won't require the city to use some other taxable land to build a park to accommodate the need. This is a built-in solution to that. Certainly will, it's impressive that they, the parties have complied with all of the recommendations that council requested the last time they were before us. And it's good when parties can come to mutual agreement.
All right.
I'll support it.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, seven to zero, and good luck with the project. Thank you. Next is a public hearing regarding the petition of Millside Development Center, Scott Zucchini, to amend the previously approved conditional use permit for a cluster commercial development at 1602, 1604, 1606, 1608, 1610, 1612, 1614, and 1620 Graysmill Road to allow the construction of a 22,300-square-foot assisted living facility in a B1 limited business district. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and that is Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the cluster commercial development was approved by council on January 11, 2005. A cluster commercial development is approved by conditional use permit by the city council. And these types of developments allows a common plan of development, which allows reduced setbacks, lot sizes, also shared ingress and egress. The city's future land use map does recommend a mixed use for the area. These areas do not fit into any one land use category and designed to mitigate any potential land use conflicts at time of site plan approval. The subject property is zoned to be one limited business district, which does permit, actually permits the proposed memory care and assisted living facility by right. It also permits the cluster commercial development. The city traffic engineer did not require a traffic study for the proposed use. Stormwater management would be addressed by the use of the existing regional detention pond at the southeast corner of the property, and water quality would be addressed by best management practices and the purchase of off-site nutrient credits. The addition of the 32-bid facility should have little impact on the area. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on November 13, and recommended approval with the conditions outlined in your resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone here who would like to make a presentation?
Good afternoon.
Councilmembers. My name is Michael Bryant. I'm a project engineer with Hurtin' Profit, and I am here representing the client and the owner for this project. And as Tom has mentioned, this is, this project will serve a need that is needed in the city of Lynchburg, and it's actually a similar use of a building that's already existing in the Millside Center. And as Tom had mentioned, this is a, even though we're a little bit larger building size, we have a smaller use of the, with the just 32 bids. So therefore, the traffic is gonna be reduced with this footprint, and as compared to what the original CUP was for in 2005. I know that Graysmill Road is often a concern for traffic and stuff, but this is definitely would be an advantage to help improve that situation because of the reduced number of vehicles. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have and on the project, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. Thank you. No rebuttal is needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. It's Councilmember Hegelston, followed by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion for approval.
I will second it.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to thank the developer, and obviously, this is a great need wherever he went. This is a great need in the city and the community, and thank you for it. Glad to see that you're building and investing in the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
It's a great use of the property, and we're excited for it. So good luck with the project.
All right. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you, and good luck with the project. Next is a public hearing regarding amending the fiscal year 2020 budget to reflect the return of school's fund balance for ongoing activities not expended in fiscal year 2019, and appropriating supplemental funds for both the capital and operating budgets for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 20, 2020. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Sivercek.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the Lynchburg City School Board requested the appropriation of the entire $5,8139 in fiscal year 2019 operating fund balance for capital improvement program projects, the textbook and health insurance reserves, technology upgrades, software, bus and bus engine rebuilds. City staff recommends reduction of this request by $1,233,075, with 1.2 million allocated to a reserve for implementing recommendations from the task force on the future of pre-K, pre-K-12 education and beyond, and $33,075 for expenses associated with the work of the task force. Funding is needed for a demographic study to be performed by the Walden Cooper Center Demographics Research Group, as well as other to be determined costs, which may include outside consultants. The reduction proposed by staff comes from a deferral of elementary gym number four for $800,000 until the task force completes its work and the request to increase the health insurance reserve by $433,075. The current balance in the health insurance reserve is $266,925. This action is requested in accordance with an agreement signed by the Lynchburg City Council and the school board dated December 14, 1993, which provides for the creation and maintenance of a school's operating fund balance for the purpose of underwriting any occasional shortfalls from the various budgetary categories of direct state funding support, as well as other applications, all based upon the required expenditure approval of the school board. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Sivercek. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of city council and city manager. I am Crystal Edwards, Superintendent of Lynchburg City Schools, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of my students, my staff, and my buildings. So we are here tonight, and we do ask that you seriously consider supporting our fund balance requests. There are many things in our fund balance requests that our students can benefit from, including some of the big ones, like a new practice field at EC Glass, which is something that many of our kids and our parents have talked about. There are some items in there that are just school beautification things. We want to make sure that the learning environment for our students is a wonderful learning environment, and although they may seem small, but making our classrooms a place environment, and although they may seem small, but making our classrooms a place where students really want to be is a great thing to be. There are other things in there that are of security nature, and some controls and elevator things, and things that we just need to stay current and stay relevant. But most important, what you'll see, is just our continual need to do the best that we can do for our students and really make LCS a place where our staff, our students, and our families feel comfortable, feel welcome, feel supported, and that is our ongoing mission. So, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight in support of our requests, and we would be happy to take any questions that you have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen. I'm Coach Brian Farrow with EC Glass High School Football, and I'm speaking on behalf of the need for the practice field with football. EC Glass football field gets a lot of action with the city, which is great, which you got a lot of travel team soccer, nets, and those type of things. In this past season, you know, we had a lot of time, spent a lot of time moving soccer nets off the field due to the fact that everybody used the field. So, the field would definitely come in handy for us, that we have a continual time for our players to be safe and not have to move practice field, I mean, practice things around from all over the city. And also, it helps out for other coaches as well. The field hockey coaches here, they have to go to City Stadium to practice, and that's a liability when you have to transfer students to the stadium, those type of things, gas money, those type of things. It's good to have the students here. It's easy to supervise students when you know you've got them at the field. So, I'm going to let her speak on behalf of that. I do appreciate the time coming and sharing about the importance of that the extra practice field will come in handy for EC Glass High School. Thank you.
Good evening. Nice to see you. Yes, I am Nikki Arons. I'm with EC Glass Field Hockey. I started this past season, and I am very much in favor for this practice field. Number one, we do have to travel there two times a week. That means loading two very heavy portable goals in our car, and it makes it very hard for young ladies to transport those goals and set them up. It cuts into our practice time, which in turn, we don't have a productive practice. So, it's also safety. When we go off-site, we don't have an athletic trainer. We have nothing, okay? I always have to provide rides for the players. A lot of times, I have to throw backpacks and such in other players' cars to get the equipment in. It's just a huge inconvenience. So, please, please, allow that field to happen. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Hello, Madam Mayor, city council. My name is Ronald Shavers. I'm a graduate of EC Glass High School. Just so happened, many years ago, I was the AAA Player of the Year from EC Glass, and it was through being able to practice on the field below that we was able to develop leadership skills, other ways we were able to work with kids in the community. We were able to work with so many kids in the community that Glass has been so great. This farm, the school that we all graduated from, it's been so great that with this funding, it would allow more kids to be, like they say, safely, be able to participate in sports. Because through their participation in the sports, it leads to them staying out of trouble, keeping them into more safe and positive environments. So, like I say, inside our city, man, any funding we can have to help kids, right, to be able to have safe environments, play, especially be a part of EC Glass and EC Glass family. If you guys can help promote that and fund that, it would be so tremendous inside our city. So, on behalf of what we do inside our community, helping young people, we strongly support EC Glass and this funding for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Susan Morrison, and I serve as the Chair of Lynchburg City School Board this year. Thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to think about the needs for our children and our employees. We are grateful for all that you do for us, and we put a great deal of thought into what these requests should do and be, and we appreciate your serious consideration for our kids.
Dr. Coleman?
Well said.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Megan Short. I'm a student athlete at EC Glass. I play soccer. So, what the girl soccer team has to do is we have to go over to City Stadium for our practices and our games, and we don't have buses that take us there, so we would have to drive ourselves. I used to have to find rides to get there because I couldn't drive before, but now, since we have eighth graders and freshmen this year that cannot drive, it's just a struggle trying to get everybody there, especially on time. And then, we don't have an athletic trainer on the field, so that's another problem for sure, because if injuries happen, we either have to call somebody to us, or we have to drive all the way back over to Glass. And I feel like if we had this practice field, for sure, we would have the opportunities of not just having more practice time instead of starting 30 minutes late. We would be able to make a bigger progression in our season and our records and everything like that, and I feel like it would just really help us, for sure, especially other sports. Like, we have 26 sports at Glass, and I know we have football and lacrosse that are big sports, especially opposite seasons, but it's basically girls lacrosse and guys lacrosse that are on one field at the same time. And then, we have soccer, girls and guys soccer, that split the field at City Stadium. And if we had this practice field, it would be just easier for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm the girls' lacrosse coach at EC Glass. Thank you this evening for your time. In addition to their safety comments made earlier, without an athletic trainer on site, we also don't have access to the defibrillator on site, so a portable one would have to be carried to and pro, which isn't always available, which is a definite risk. The extra field would allow a continuous flow of practice time. If a child has to, if a player has to have practice all the way at 7:00, they ride the bus home, then they have to find a way back, and not every child can find a way back, so they end up not playing, or they're hanging out and sometimes getting into trouble. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. If there is no one else to speak in favor, is there anyone to speak in opposition? All right, thank you. With no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. And council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I move the motion to approve as submitted by the city manager.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Their motion has been made in second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Wright?
Yes, I think that this is a really reasonable compromise between what the schools, and by the way, welcome to the many members of the LCS community who have joined us here this evening, and thank you for your advocacy. But I think this is a really good compromise between what the schools have requested and then what the city manager and her team have worked out with the school administration. So, I think it's productive. I'm glad to see that we are planning for what the Education Task Force may bring down. I think it's really wise to set funds aside now, so I'm really in favor of this and excited to be able to support it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Farrow.
I think Mr. Wright summarized that very well. I would like to add, I didn't really, I guess when I graduated from Glass in '92, we maybe had half the number of teams that you have now, and we thought the field was pretty busy then, so I'm happy to support this, and I wish all the athletic teams the best of success.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Hegelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also appreciate all of the thought and effort that went into this. I do think the manager's compromise proposal is appropriate inasmuch as the Education Task Force is going to come forth with some significant recommendations, which are not going to be inexpensive, and just as we did with Heritage High School, we need to be putting funds aside to finance what will be both significant operational and capital expenses, so foresight will serve us all well. With regard to the specific elements where the funds may go to, certainly, council is not in a position to be telling the school division how and where to spend whatever money is allocated to them, but I do think the plea that's been made with regard to additional athletic facilities at EC Glass is appropriate. When I was the soccer coach at EC Glass, and I will say the first championship soccer coach at EC Glass, we actually practiced on the outfield of City Stadium baseball field because there was no space on the Glass campus, so we would have to go over there every day to practice. It was a great surface, but it was challenging. Since those days, we've had, hockey has been created, girl soccer didn't exist then, and of course, lacrosse didn't exist anywhere in the city in any form whatsoever, except some of the private schools, so the number of sports have proliferated, and there just needs to be space made. So, equipping that small plot at the end of the football field next to Lakeside Drive is very appropriate.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when I hear this request, and I can understand the need of the different fields and whatnot, but I sit back and I look and I think about last year's budget, where we, council had funded about $100 million to Lynchburg City School System to educate about 8,000 kids. Several of us in this dais said, "That's a lot of money. That's coming from our taxpayers," and I voted against it because I said, "There's extra money that's in here," and pretty evident today, and I appreciate the LCS administration and the school board for finding and not spending this extra $5 million. You know, getting the money, saving the $5 million only to then turn around and spend it right away, I'm not sure if that's judicious and prudent with our taxpayers' resources, especially when we have things that the city manager has mentioned, the task force. If there's an ability to utilize some of those funds, I'm really not sure how this $1 million of money that would be going into an operating fund. Normally, the money that is not used, it goes to a capital fund for one-time expenditures like athletic fields improvement. So, maybe that's the first question, Ms. City Manager. I'm looking at this recommendation for $1 million going to the school's operating fund. Normally, we, one-time money, extra money goes for one time rather than, and that's a capital expenditure, not an operating expenditure.
There are several items that are not at the level to be capitalized, so that's why they're funded through the school's operating fund.
So, the school operating fund, it's not like, I mean, when you see operating, it seems to me a little different than capital, but...
Well, the first-grade classroom rugs for $15,000, we would not capitalize those. Blinds in multiple schools.
So, they are one-time, so they're one-time items? They're not operating, like hiring staff or something?
That's correct. But they're not something that would rise to the level of the capital.
Be capitalized for depreciation, okay. And I do appreciate the fact of utilizing, as Mr. Wright said, this $1.2 million for the task force recommendations. I'd like to see that bumped up, I mean, because there could be some money that is spent for the fields that are desperately needed, but then have a little bit more money that is available for that task force, because that task force is going to come in with lots of recommendations, I imagine, and I don't know what the rush is, other than the actual needs that we heard from, which I think are very evident, but the rush to spend the rest of it. It'd be nice if we could take care of the fields and the things that are needed, take the rest of the extra money, and utilize that, at least as a placeholder, to be able to look at what that task force is going to say in a couple of months, because the task force is looking at school consolidation, because we've had a decline in enrollment over the last 10, 15, 20 years. What needs to be done? The more money that we have available means the less we're going to have to raise taxes to spend it, the more money that we'd be able to help facilitate those things. I think that would be a more prudent use, rather than just taking portion of it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
One item, Madam Mayor, I probably should have started off with this. My wife is a principal in Lynchburg City Schools in one of the elementary schools. I don't think this type of funding would impact her school or any of the schools to any degree, but to the extent that there may be the appearance of a conflict of interest, I disclose that I can be unbiased and without prejudice in voting and discussing this. I have been advised by the Commonwealth Attorney and the city attorney that there is no legal conflict of interest due to the relationship with me and my wife's position, but I make that disclosure.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any, Councilmember Wilder?
Yes, again, I want to thank the school system for the work you do in our community. I just doing a point of clarification. I know the school system had recommended $5,800,000, something like that nature, but I noticed the city recommended a different amount. Was that something you negotiated with together, or was the recommendation just from the city?
It is the recommendation from the city, but I did have a conversation with the school superintendent when the council agenda item was put together.
So, they are in agreement? They are aware of that?
I don't know that they're in agreement, but we did have a conversation. I suspect they're not in agreement.
I mean, okay, so I'm glad we're working on a compromise. There's a lot of compromise today, so we're glad that we're going to compromise. Again, in looking at the list, again, it's all needed things in our school system for our children, to make our school system better, and I know when you have, when you're working on a budget, you do want to constrain your budget and keep it to a certain size, but when you do have something extra, because you're working your budget, keep it at a certain size, but if you do have some extra funds, you have so many things you keep putting off the back burner. I was on the school board for nine years, and so many times, we put things off because we just didn't have the funds for it. But we saw we have a need, we always have a need, and we see we have some extra funds, they say, "Well, let's do this, let's do that," because there's always going to be a need for our kids, from the buses, and make sure they're working properly and all that. So, there's so many needed items on this list, it's not like any of these fluff. It's everything that's needed for our kids to better our education, because schools need them to be better, so they can live, work, and grow even stronger. So, I'm in support of the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Just one other question, which I found the list. When we had our audit review this afternoon, the auditor said that the health insurance reserve on the school side has been, can be decreased because they've had great claims experience. I'm seeing on here about a half a million dollars extra go into the health insurance reserve on the school side.
The city's recommendation is that that $443,075, well, $400,000 of that would go towards the task force reserve.
Gotcha, thank you.
And the rest of it would be appropriated for needs of the task force.
So, we both heard the auditor correctly. Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I just want to say thank you for all your work on this, and I think it's a great, all these projects are really needed, I know that, and I think it's a great compromise that we're making, so I would support the...
All right, thank you, and I will be supporting the motion, too, and I appreciate all of the advocates of the schools here, and Dr. Edwards, your presentation, and the task force is doing some good work, and so we are looking for great outcomes, and so I think we need to support that financially, and so I appreciate it's the will of the council to do that, even starting now. So, thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes, six to one. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Yep, thank you very much. Curb your enthusiasm, thank you. All right. Next is the, if I can have everyone please quietly leave, thank you. We're continuing on with the meeting. The next is public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of a resolution to authorize the city to contract a debt and issue general obligation, public improvement bonds of the city in the principal amount not to exceed $32 million, to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, improvement, extension, enlargement, equipping, rehabilitation, and repair of various public improvement projects of and for the city, including related design and architectural and engineering services, and underwriting compensation and other costs of issuance of such bonds, including but not limited to the Lakeside Drive Bridge Project, acquisition of fleet vehicles, transportation projects, school improvement projects... acquisition of fleet vehicles, transportation projects, school improvement projects, sewer improvement projects, water improvement projects, construction, renovation, and improvements to various city buildings, parks, and recreation projects, economic development projects, and storm water improvement projects. Collectively, the projects. The resolution will also authorize the city to issue its general obligation public improvement bond anticipation notes of the city, if any, in an amount not to exceed $32 million in order to provide short-term financing for the projects in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds and to reduce the annual debt service requirements of the city. I will turn to Ms. Witt as a staff presentation. Thank you.
The city's financial advisor, Dabington Company, gave a report last month to explain the plan and to permanently finance the current line of credit, and to also borrow not to exceed $32 million for the design and construction of Lakeside Drive Bridge at College Lake Dam. The resolution council is asked to consider gives latitude to fund other projects should the bridge project come in under budget or be delayed. The maximum interest rate that we could move forward with this bond issuance is 5%. And also, because the permanent financing of the line of credit was included in the original regu, I can't speak, it's late. The original resolution to establish the line of credit, you're not required to do a separate line of credit, or a separate resolution for that. Sorry.
All right, thank you, Ms. Witt. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? No rebuttal is needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Perrow.
Madam Mayor, I move the resolution.
Thank you, the first resolution. All right, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Wilder. The motion has been made in second to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation public improvement bonds not to exceed $32 million in principle to finance the cost of various public improvement projects. Councilmember Perrow, further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Witt, you said the ceiling was going to be 5%, but we're looking, what's our target rate?
We're hoping that we're going to be about 2 and 1/4.
So we hope, if at all possible, be at 2 and 1/4% interest, which is an extraordinarily low interest rate, granted, it is a tax-free municipal bond. So what we're doing is effectively taking what has amounted to credit card debt, we've taken short-term financing to pay for all these really needed and important projects, and now we're going to make that loan permanent. So it'll be a 20-plus year, or is it 30, I'm sorry?
It'll be 20 years.
A 20-year loan at hopefully 2 and 1/2%, depending on what the auction comes out as, which is long-term money at extraordinarily low rate, and which could be potentially a rate-rising environment. So this is a very prudent measure to be taking, and I certainly support it. It gets rid of the short-term money, makes it long-term, it's paying for long-term items, such as refinancing our house.
That's correct.
All right, so great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
Councilman Perrow explained it perfectly, so I will let him, this for there. No other comments.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote on this first motion. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Now, is there a motion on the second portion of this?
The second resolution is to appropriate what's estimated, pretty high, they'll probably be lower than this, the actual cost of issuance to do this bond issue.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you. In a second.
Second.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second. Any further discussion?
No more.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hegelsson.
Trying to find it, it's like, I think you do like a net present value calculation, about $350,000 to refinance, is that, I'm trying to find it real quickly, but if you can...
This is to pay for bond counsel, the bond rating agencies, our financial advisor fee, official statement preparation, the QSEP numbers that we pay for, and any other miscellaneous type expenditures with this issuance. But these are, the $350,000 is estimated high as a just-in-case.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is the public hearing regarding the consideration of adding a new section, 36-178, to the code of the City of Lynchburg, 1981, relating to the establishment of a commercial property assessed clean energy, or CPACE, financing program. Pursuant to the CPACE Act, any Virginia locality may enact an ordinance authorizing a CPACE program to provide a CPACE loans for the initial acquisition, an installation of eligible clean energy resiliency and/or storm water management improvements with willing owners of qualifying properties, which may include renovations to existing improvements or new construction. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Benson.
Madam Mayor, members of council, commercial property assessed clean energy, or CPACE, is a financing tool enabled by Virginia statute and established by local governments that allows property owners to finance energy efficiency, water conservation, renewable energy projects. Property owners receive long-term 100% financing from qualified capital providers and repay that loan through a special voluntary real estate assessment. The Virginia General Assembly initially passed an ordinance allowing localities to establish PACE programs in 2009, and significantly revised the statute in 2015. Just this year, the General Assembly added storm water management to the list of projects eligible for financing. CPACE ordinances have already been approved in many localities in Virginia, including Arlington, Fairfax, Loudon, and Fredericksburg, and are underway in Roanoke and Alexandria. CPACE projects are underwritten by a third-party capital provider, similar to a normal commercial real estate loan, but include a requirement to meet guidelines established by the city. Eligible activities include renovations to existing improvements or new construction, and financing may cover a wide range of energy improvements and upgrades, such as lighting, heating and cooling, insulation, motors, pumps, and solar panels. Each loan is secured by a voluntary special assessment lien on the property that is the subject of the CPACE loan. CPACE loans are repaid in installment payments due and payable in accordance with the CPACE program guidelines and financing documents. In addition to the proposed ordinance that you have before you, city staff has provided a recommended standard financing agreement, which includes a number of highlighted items that will be completed when an agreement is reached for a project. The proposed ordinance establishes a program administrator and a program manager, which is the city manager, her designee, or a procured third party, to supervise and implement the program. Staff recommends a program fee of $250 per project, consistent with fees established for the real estate rehabilitation and renovation program. The proposed ordinance further clarifies that the city will not accept any liability and that borrowers and creditors enter into this agreement with full understanding that the city is held harmless and all financial matters arising from the CPACE agreement. Only the owner of the tax parcel is ever liable for the repayment, and if the property goes into default, the city enforces the special assessment in the same manner as any other property tax lien. The public benefits of the program include the environmental benefits of energy-efficient, water-usage-efficient buildings, the incentive to renovate, retrofit, or rehabilitate historic buildings, enhancement of the real property tax base, and the promotion of employment and economic growth in the city. We believe that this is another tool in the toolkit to encourage rehabilitation and renovation of older buildings in the city and sustainable development practices. Locally, we have had interest from developers for potentially catalytic redevelopment projects that would like to use this program to finance improvements to the sites and buildings that they're interested in. Following the public hearing, I'm available along with the city assessor, Jeff Bandi, to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benson. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Please come forward.
My name is Simon Burgess. I reside in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. My development company is Mayfair Street Partners. We're looking to invest in Lynchburg. We support this CPACE program that's been submitted. We think it would be a great fiscal benefit for Lynchburg, the city of Lynchburg, to use this program, and I think it would incentivize and motivate lots of other developers and investors to enter the Lynchburg market in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? There is no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, it is your pleasure. Councilmember Wright.
Madam Mayor, I move the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Wright, any further discussion?
I think Ms. Benson's presentation demonstrated that this will be a valuable addition to our economic development toolbox, and so I'm excited to see it offered here, because hopefully it will incentivize folks to make more investments in our community. I'm in favor, especially given that the city has no liability in this question.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do believe this is an excellent opportunity for economic development and growth of our tax base without raising our tax rates. I do have a quick question for Mr. Irwin, and just briefly, if you wouldn't mind. Does this language really, is it derived almost state from state, directly from state code?
It's a little more detailed than what's in the state code. It is based on the language in the statute, but it's also based on a model ordinance that has been put together by organizations. It's also based on some ordinances that were adopted by other localities to try to fit Lynchburg's needs. So it's a little bit of a combination of everything.
I have to be honest with you, I didn't read every word of this. There's a lot of stuff on this agenda tonight. So you've always given us good advice in the past. We've got the ability to modify the code if we have some tweaks that we need to make. But I think this is a great starting point. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelsson.
Just, you know, I realize, what's the benefit of this? Now, where it's been tried, has there been any negative downside?
The benefit is the lean status of the, of the energy efficiency aspect is superior with this, the lean status is just below real estate taxes. So the construction person would get a better rate on financing for it. It's interesting, I've had some conversations with folks who have done rehabilitation projects, and the yield on these projects are not very good. Without rehab tax credits, historic credits, and all these things combined, that's the only reason these folks are doing these deals. And so this will, you know, in addition to perhaps renovating some properties, will also have some better energy efficiency things put in place when they do the renovation.
So you're saying the yield on the clean energy proposals aren't very high? Is that what you just said?
No, the yield on projects, renovation projects, isn't great in its entirety. So there's quite a bit of risk. This helps to mitigate that risk somewhat.
And then with this, the city, what, we're just amending the code so this can be utilized in the city of Lynchburg, not any risk to our taxpayers or our city, or...
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero, and good luck with the project. Thank you. Next, our public comments. City council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Tonight, we have a number of citizens who have signed up to speak on the topic of gun laws and the Second Amendment. Because this can be an emotional subject, I want to remind everyone of some of council's rules of conduct. Speakers are expected to adhere to the time limits of three minutes for an individual speaker, and five minutes if the speaker represents a group. Citizens can express conflicting and diverse positions regarding this topic, so in order to encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation of persons who may hold differing or unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. Further, when speaking at or attending a city council meeting, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, or use profanity or vulgar language. Having explained the rules of conduct, I'm confident that all of the citizens who are here tonight will treat one another with their usual courtesy and respect, even though they may hold strong and differing opinions when it comes to this topic. Next is number 14, hearing from a citizen, Kurt, Mr. Kurt Deemer.
Councilmen, councilwomen, staff, citizens, 100 people in the overflow room, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for listening to us, council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight and present you with our citizen petitions. My name is Kurt Deemer, and I'm a lifetime resident of Lynchburg, Virginia. Our petition specifically requests that you support making Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary city. With threats to restrict our rights being made by the governor and the new legislature, the need to protect our rights is greater than ever. Your vote on this issue is crucial, and we respectfully ask you to uphold your solemn oath to uphold the Constitution and support the Constitution of the United States, as well as the Constitution of the state of Virginia. Please let us know tonight how you feel about sanctuary city. That's truly the issue we're all here for. To date, almost 1,500 people have sent this petition to you through change.org, and it's a current and complete list of their names. I'm here to deliver their message, but I have a more personal motivation for being here. I am not here to demand anything. I am here to humbly ask you to listen to my story. I may not fit your idea of the typical Second Amendment activist. I have never led a petition drive before. This is my first. I have never spoken before at city council before. I am not a member of the NRA. I have never been hunting, and I have never owned a firearm until I turned 45 years old. I'm an artist by trade. I have a graduate degree in business and own my own photography studio. I remarried last July and buried my mother, my beautiful mother, in September. I'm the father of seven amazing kids, and that is really why I am here. When Lynchburg resident Raymond Woods, decapitated body, was dumped unceremoniously on Roaring Run Road, it was less than a mile from my then-fiance's home. It was my first wake-up call, when I learned he was kidnapped and lived less than a mile from my widowed mother-in-law's home in Sandusky. I knew something had fundamentally changed in my thinking. I think I fully realized then that our individual safety was primarily our responsibility, and not something that I could pass off completely to public safety authorities, no matter how good they were. I knew this somewhat instinctively, and I had already had alarm systems, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, tools to keep my family safe. But none of these tools would have helped defend my kids against evil men with bad intentions. So I got better tools, and I got trained to use them. Please do not let Richmond or Washington DC take away my tools and turn me into a class six felon in the process. And do not let them turn our God-given right to self-protection into something that they can grandfather for me, maybe, but then take away from my kids and my grandkids someday because I can't even pass along my gun to them. Pass the sanctuary resolution, keep Lynchburg what it is, a relatively very safe place to live. And I don't want to, you know, let that story, change that. I know we are safe. I want to keep it that way. Trust the citizens, trust us. Trust us to partner with the public safety professionals. Pass sanctuary cities so the politicians in Richmond and DC know that Lynchburg law-abiding citizens will never give up our tools that we need to protect our families. A wise person told me, a lady named Yvonne Green, that this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. This is a life-or-death issue. I agree with Ms. Green. Make Lynchburg a sanctuary city for life, like 47 other localities have done around you.
Thank you, Mr. Deemer.
And I'd like to deliver this to...
Uh huh, thank you. If you give it to our clerk, she will give it to us. Thank you. Next is number 15, hearing from a citizen, Mr. Roger Fonz.
I'm pretty new to this area here. I've only been here for two years. What do you think?
Thank you. Welcome to Lynchburg.
So anyway, here it goes. I'm going to whip this on you and let you see what you think, okay? When all the guns have been banned, and all the words have been censored, when all the history has been erased, when all freedom... history has been erased, when all freedom has been taken, only then will you discover why one right to bear arms is so high on the list. I'm from Detroit. The chief of police made, excuse me, made, oh man, I can't even read my own lighting here. Concealed weapon permits easier to obtain and reduce the death at 22 percent. Okay? That's a big margin, big, big margin. But now, the city council has allowed the criminals to post lower bonds, no bonds, so they are back on what they were before they started. Okay? Let's see here. I want to show you a little trick here that I learned when I was in high school. I don't know if anybody's ever seen this before. This is the Constitution. You can't break it when it's like this. Everybody see it? You cannot break it. All right? So the deal is this. If I take away free speech, that's one. I take away religious, religion, that's two. When I take away search and seizure, that's three. When I take away confront the accuser, that's four. When I take away the weapons, that's five. And let's throw a couple in more because once you get start going, it's domino effect, okay? What do you think? No? There it is, right there. That's your freedom and your Constitution. Okay, on a couple of things that I'd like to discuss, and I want, no disrespect for you gentlemen over here, the police, because it's not directed at you, okay? I'm talking about Florida and Las Vegas. I saw things in Florida and Las Vegas that I never would have seen in the Army, never in my lifetime. I saw in Florida, a man stay inside a...
I just want to remind you, your red light's blinking, so, just so you'll know. Your three minutes when you see that.
Okay, anyway, so anyway, I saw a man sit on a stair while those kids were being killed in there, okay? Another case is, one story above the one in Las Vegas, was a whole bunch of police and SWAT teams, okay? And none of them went down there to get that kid. I would have, and I'm not even a policeman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fonz.
Thank you for letting me chat.
All right. Thank you. And next, we will hear from a citizen, Mr. Isaiah Knight, on behalf of Virginia Families Political Action Committee. And just so everyone will be aware, the green light begins your time, the yellow light is that you're nearing the end of your three or five minutes, and then the red light is that your time is over. So that's just for the speakers to be aware. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. The liberties of our country, the freedoms of our civil constitution are worth defending at all hazards. It's our duty to defend them against all attacks. We have received them as a fair inheritance from our worthy ancestors. They purchased them for us with toil and danger and expensive treasure and blood. Those are the words of Samuel Adams. Again, my name is Isaiah Knight. I'm chairman of Virginia Families PAC, an organization that champions the great things for families. Our men and women in blue that are charged with protecting our families, often carrying Glocks that have 15-round magazines or higher, plus they also have one in the chamber, the new proposals would limit that to 10 rounds for those without a badge. This begs the question, if someone tries to break into my home to try to hurt my children, why should I not be allowed the same opportunity to eliminate a threat that our police are entitled to do as well? How is this equal protection under the law? The unconstitutional magazine limits are just a portion of the insane proposals coming from Richmond. Proposals that will limit our ability to protect our most precious treasure, our families, our kids. The red flag laws are another form of tyranny proposed that would allow an upset ex or disgruntled neighbor to remove property by force ex parte, meaning without the ability to defend yourself, violating several of our constitutional rights. Every county surrounding Lynchburg, every single one, has pledged to uphold their oath of office by doing all in their power to protect their citizens' constitutional rights. Tonight, there is no Second Amendment sanctuary resolution on the agenda in Lynchburg City. Lynchburg is a desert island in a sea of liberty right now. Delegate Nick Freitas, a champion for Second Amendment rights, says cowardice is contagious, but so is courage. Be courageous tonight. Uphold your oath of office. Support the constitutional rights of your citizens, because if you don't, election day is coming, and we will all remember.
Thank you. Next is to hear from a citizen, Mr. Nathan Cantu.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Nathan Cantu, and I've been a resident of Lynchburg for the last 10 years. Lynchburg is my home. It's my community that I love. And like many of you in the last 10 years, and like many of us in this room, there have been several times where I have watched in horror as communities around the nation have been torn apart by gun violence. And whenever I see news of another mass shooting come in on my phone, I ask myself the question. Will one day the city that I love and live in, Lynchburg, be spoken of in the same breath as cities like Parkland, El Paso, Virginia Beach, and Newtown? And that scares me. The idea of Lynchburg being torn apart by gun violence scares me, because I want what many of us in this room want. I want to live in a city where I don't have to be afraid, where my children and my family can grow up, and I don't have to live in fear. We all want the same thing. It's why we have laws, it's why we have government, it's why we have police officers, and it's why I carry a firearm every day. We all know that there are evil individuals who want to harm our community. The question that we disagree on is how do we stop them? For myself and many others in this room, we have decided that the best way to stop evil individuals is to seek out on our own time and with our own funding the same tools and training that law enforcement uses every day, because we care that much about our community. We love our community that much. Unfortunately, recent laws introduced in the General Assembly seek to remove the access that private citizens like me have to the best tools possible to defend our communities against evil people. Worse, this misguided effort is vaguely written, ignores existing law in the Virginia and US constitutions, and criminalizes a large portion of otherwise law-abiding private citizens for merely possessing commonly-used tools of self-defense. These proposed laws not only make it difficult for us to protect the community and the people that we love, but they also signal a massive lack of trust in the people of Virginia by the General Assembly. Healthy communities are built on trust. Trust that all of us, regardless of our political beliefs or firearms ownership, want the same thing, a healthy, thriving, safe community where we don't have to live in fear. While I understand the desire of the General Assembly to create safer communities, banning commonly-used tools of self-defense is not the solution. These laws do not communicate trust. They only divide us over our ownership of inanimate objects and encourage more fear and more dissension. Currently, there are other counties and cities around us that are signaling their disapproval of the General Assembly's legislative agenda by adopting sanctuary city resolutions. I urge you as council members to send and signal your disapproval of their legislative agenda with a resolution that states that if passed, these ill-conceived and divisive gun laws will not be enforced in the city of Lynchburg. Thank you for your time and for the way you serve our communities.
Thank you. Next is hearing from a citizen, Ryan Thomas.
My name is Ryan Thomas. I've been a citizen in Lynchburg for about 15 years now. I'll get right to it. These comments assume that everyone here is familiar with Virginia Senate Bill 16, which criminalizes mere possession of so-called assault firearms, which is a meaningless political term that can mean whatever a politician wants it to mean in order to achieve a desired end. When Senate Bill 16 passes, hundreds of thousands of otherwise peaceful and law-abiding citizens will be rendered felons with the stroke of a pen. I will become a felon. My wife, a professor at a state university, will become a felon. My mom, the director of a senior community choir, will become a felon. I could go on, but the point here is simple. SB 16 will make felons out of good people for merely continuing to exercise an enumerated right that has been practiced in this state for centuries. It will render punishment in the extreme for something that harms no one and creates no victim. This is not justice. This is tyranny. Not only is it an unjust law, but it is also predicated on such misguided premises that one is forced to question the motives of this bill's sponsors and cosponsors. Hammers and baseball bats are used to kill more people every year than semi-automatic rifles. America's homicide rate has continued to decline. It has plummeted, despite the tens of millions of semi-automatic rifles that have flooded the market since the expiration of the 1994 so-called assault weapons ban. Indeed, if SB 16 was really predicated on promoting public safety, it would have targeted handguns, which are used in the overwhelming majority of homicides committed with firearms. In fact, the two deadliest mass shootings in Virginia's history were committed with handguns. For those of you in Moms Demand Action, yes, I knew you'd be here tonight. I would like to issue this challenge. Either openly admit that you want to forcibly deprive us of legally acquired property which is explicitly protected by both the federal and state constitutions, or speak out against Senate Bill 16 with us. I was told by one of your own Lynchburg members that, and I quote, "We don't want to take your guns." Yet SB 16, which was written and cosponsored entirely by Democrats whom your group helped to elect, does exactly that. I would never seek to use the threat of state-sponsored violence to bend you to my will. I am not the aggressor here. I have no desire to tell you how to live, or what you should or should not be able to buy or own. I appeal to your better nature and ask the same basic courtesy of you. I would therefore ask that you speak out in unity with us against SB 16. If you will not, then I would ask that you, at the very least, be more honest about the true intentions of your organization. Having said that, I implore the city council now to do the right thing. No law that so obviously and profoundly violates the most basic principles of ethics and indeed of reason can even be called the law. It is simply an illegitimate dictate, and we are morally obligated to treat it as such. We must therefore declare Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary city. I should note that this is not an extreme measure. It is simply the appropriate reaction to what is an extreme and draconian overreach of government power wielded by those beholden to the out-of-state billionaires who bought and paid for their electoral victories. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next, number 19, was a citizen that asked to be removed. Next, the number 20, here from a citizen, Mr. Craig Storrs, Jr.
Good evening. My name is Craig Storrs. I live in the city of Lynchburg, and for the past 11 years, about eight of those have been here in Lynchburg. I actually live in Ward 1. I've stood in front of this city council, speaking about a variety of different things over the years. I've disagreed with some of you on multiple occasions, however, I've always respected the fact that this body has taken the time to discuss issues of local importance. Today, I wanted to speak to you on the issue of gun rights. To say that elections have consequences is an understatement. It's usually used as a negative. You lost the election, so now you have to deal with the consequences of that election. And that's certainly true. However, when I say that elections have consequences, Democrats are learning that their victories across Virginia have consequences right now. They've managed to galvanize gun owners in a way not seen before, as evidenced behind me and upstairs and around the state over the past two weeks or so. Lynchburg has a history with gun rights. Liberty University was transitioned from a gun-free zone to a gun-friendly zone by the work of myself and friends of mine back in 2010. When we were pushing for that, the press and gun-control hysterics stated that Liberty University would turn into the Wild West, that students would receive a bad grade, snap, and start shooting professors and students. That was an exact quote by a member of the press to me when she was questioning me for an article. Now, nine years later, all I can say is that they've been proven not just wrong, but cataclysmically wrong. In fact, this has proven that crime is deterred by the potential presence of law-abiding firearm owners, regardless of the amount of rounds that their guns may hold. The Democrat argument in the General Assembly, though on the surface seemingly well-meaning, boils down to a deep-seated mistrust. They don't trust the people. They want to disarm populace, and I know this for a fact because I used to be a legislative assistant in the General Assembly, and I've worked with these people too. I want to believe that each and every one of you understands that your power to govern comes from the people sitting behind me and around this city. I want to believe that you understand that the people have the right to defend themselves as they see fit, not as the government sees fit. You've heard and you'll hear from people today who say that a resolution regarding Second Amendment sanctuary status isn't needed and isn't worth the paper it's written on. We can disagree with that. However, that's where their argument loses steam, and that's simply because these are the same people that also argue for localities to become sanctuary cities for illegal immigration. Certainly, this council has the authority to consider whether or not they want to expend city resources helping the Commonwealth enforce unconstitutional gun laws if they have the authority to refuse cooperation with ICE. Lynchburg would not be alone in this measure, as the only city supporting Second Amendment sanctuary status. In fact, as I was sitting out there, I got notified that Martinsville City passed it today. I'll end with this. A man's rights rest in three boxes: the ballot box, the jury box, and the cartridge box. Now, before anyone thinks I'm trying to stir up fear, that was a quote from 1867 by Frederick Douglass when segregation laws were being passed. That's just something to consider for those who say that government won't take away rights from a population. Please, support the Second Amendment resolution on your general business, but go further than that and declare Second Amendment sanctuary status in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Next is hearing from a citizen, Mr. Jamie Cash.
I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I had written this big elaborate speech with the intent to wow you, but chose against it. I am just a simple man with simple beliefs. God is a father and self-preservation being two of my many beliefs. Michael Bloomberg made a statement, "If you want to have a gun in your house, I think you're pretty stupid." My question is, why is that stupid? Why is it stupid to want to be able to protect yourself, your family, or anyone that may need it? I'm not a millionaire like him. I cannot afford to have my own armed personal security detail. As stated, I'm just a simple man. But does that mean my life is worthless, and that I shouldn't be afforded the same rights guaranteed to me by the Creator, which is life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? Because according to the Declaration of Independence, I, along with every American, am extended these rights. After tragic events, people will blame the person that carried out these events. However, in a mass shooting, the people will blame the gun. I find that strange that people will blame the other person in everything other than a shooting, but will blame the gun, which cannot act on its own. People say, "Oh, guns are scary," or "only the police should have guns." There are over 76,000 people in Lynchburg and around 150 Lynchburg police officers. That is around one officer per 500 people. How is one officer to protect that many people at one time? One political figure has said, "If you need 30 rounds to hunt, you suck at hunting. This isn't about hunting. This is about protection." Being a man, I wear multiple hats. One of these hats is protector. Matthew 22:39, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." To me, that love means protect as well. As I started to give a firearms class one time, a student of mine once asked me, "Why do I carry all the time?" My response was, "Because I cannot fit a police officer in my pocket." When I give a firearm class, I like to ask people I'm instructing why they want to take this class. The answer I get most often is for protection. I want to be able to protect my family or myself. One female student blatantly came out and said, "Because I refuse to be raped." And I applaud her for that. I applaud anyone that refuses to be a victim. No one wants to, nor should anyone, become a victim. These gun laws being proposed by the governor are not only unconstitutional by the Constitution of the United States Amendment 2, but are also in violation of Virginia's Constitution, Article 1, Section 13. These laws will only affect the law-abiding citizen, not the criminal, because criminals do what do not and will not obey the law. For example, the cities of Chicago, Detroit, Baltimore, and Los Angeles have some of the strictest gun laws in the nation, and yet they also have some of the highest crime rates as well. Wonder why that is? Again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and give my two cents worth, and I close with the following. In 1933, Adolf Hitler became Chancellor of Germany, and one of the first things he did was started disarming German Jews. And well, we all know where it went from there. And well, we all know where it went from there. On 13 November 1787, a letter to William Smith Thomas Jefferson said, "The tree of liberty must be refreshed from time to time with the blood of patriots and tyrants. It is its natural manner." Luke Chapter 11, verse 21, the Lord said, "When a strong man, armed, keepeth his palace, his goods are in peace." And I end, on 20 March 1775, Richmond, Virginia, delegate Patrick Henry spoke these closing words, "Give me liberty, or give me death." Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Next is hearing from a citizen, Mr. Damian Miller.
Thank you for taking the time to hear us all speak here tonight. Tonight, I want to put you in the shoes of a law-abiding gun owner and help you to understand why it is imperative that we join our neighboring counties and declare Lynchburg to be a Second Amendment sanctuary. There's an oft cited saying in the firearms community, perhaps you've heard it, "When seconds count, the police are only minutes away." Contrary to what some may claim, this aphorism is not intended to malign our men and women in uniform, but rather to illustrate a truth that I think most of them here tonight would agree with. Unless you happen to live in an urban center with constant police presence, or perhaps down the block from the station, it will take time for the police to respond to an emergency call, statistically around seven to 10 minutes or more in rural or semi-rural areas like Lynchburg. It's a simple fact of physics that nobody can be everywhere at once, a fact compounded in the case of our officers by the size of the areas they serve and the uneven distribution of people across those areas. To expect our men and women in blue to be able to instantly appear on the scene of a crime in progress is not only folly, it's an unfair expectation to lay at the feet of any human being. You've probably heard all of this before from your friendly local law-abiding gun owner, but I'd encourage you to think through the implications of this fact. When seconds count and the police are minutes away, in that moment, it's my responsibility, and mine alone, to protect my own life and well-being and those of my loved ones. Evil people who perpetrate violent crimes have one goal: to use overwhelming force to get what they want. Violent criminals have no regard for the law and no moral or ethical qualms about applying as much force as they can to steal, kill, maim, or rape. This is why we refer to guns as force equalizers. They allow even the weakest and most vulnerable among us to respond to that force with greater force, to speak the only language that is capable of stopping this kind of evil in its tracks and preserving innocent life. The laws that have been prefiled in Richmond seek to, among other things, limit the ability of guns to be used in that role as force equalizers. They seek to limit magazine capacity to 10 rounds or less, to outlaw semi-automatic firearms. Let me ask, how is it just to tell a single mother wanting to protect herself and her children from a violent ex that a restraining order will be enough to keep her safe? How is it right to tell her that if that violent man comes and beats down her door, she's only allowed to have a single six-round revolver, just six shots, to defend herself and her children from him? Under SB 16, that is what lawmakers in Richmond are telling her. How is it morally defensible to tell an elderly couple living in a bad neighborhood who don't have the income to move to a nicer home that the only defense they have against a group of armed thugs invading their homes is a five-round pump-action shotgun? Lawmakers in Richmond seem to have no qualms with this, but I'm asking you, how is this right? How is it fair to tell a disabled veteran living alone that the only gun he can use to defend himself against a violent home invader is his old bolt-action rifle, a type of gun that virtually guarantees that if he misses, he won't get a second shot? The most vulnerable among us have the most at stake in this issue. As law-abiding gun owners, we seek the preservation of innocent lives, and we seek to maintain the sacred right of all men and women to defend themselves and their loved ones against the violent predators who would do them harm. We recognize that guns are force equalizers, and are often the only tool standing between the helpless and those who would victimize them for their own ends. I'm asking you tonight, do not allow our lawmakers in Richmond to strip the defenseless of the only tools they have at their disposal to stand against evil men. Please, stand with our neighboring counties and vote to make Lynchburg a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next is hearing from a citizen, Mr. Mike Sherrett.
Would you ask him to identify the jurisdiction where he lives?
All right, thank you. And I will say that all of the speakers tonight have submitted to the clerk to be on the agenda, so she does have it for record of their address. But if you would, please state your address.
Not address, jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, I'm sorry. Yes, your jurisdiction in the city, yes.
Yes, well, I'm Mike Sherrett from Ward 2.
Okay, thank you.
Council, good evening and thank you. In support of the general business item number 28 on tonight's agenda, I come before you as a husband, father of two small boys, and I've worked in the community in the financial services industry for almost 12 years. So I'd like to appeal to you on some economic factors to consider with your votes. The current proposed and previously referenced Senate Bills 16, 18, and 64 will be intrusive to Lynchburg citizens' First and Second Amendment rights. They also set dangerous precedent for lack of due process during enforcement because of the red flag component. If the city of Lynchburg doesn't declare itself a sanctuary city from these three bills, there will be inevitable economic repercussions that may be long-lasting, including the credit rating and appetite for future bond offerings. I, like many gun owners, never travel to or through municipalities that have adverse firearms laws. Tourism, retail, and dining in Lynchburg may suffer. Sales tax will go down. Please don't let your small businesses down. Portable small businesses that are against these new laws will relocate their domicile to a county, and business license tax will go down. Currently, we're surrounded by counties that have supported sanctuary status. Just imagine the outflow of home sales from the city to Amherst, Campbell, and Bedford County, when the option to protect your constitutional rights is simply the zip code you buy a home in. Property taxes will go down. I'd like to remind you that Liberty University is pro-Second Amendment and is one of the largest economic drivers in the city. You have an opportunity to choose your position on this issue, and I assure you it's wise to stay pro-Second Amendment rather than to get made an example of on the wrong side of history, and our country doesn't forget its history, particularly when it comes to violating the Bill of Rights. More importantly, most importantly, the Lynchburg Police Department is already struggling with staffing. Would you add the pressure on them to come disarm good, law-abiding citizens like myself? Do you think recruiting new officers will become easier, knowing they may have to try to disarm their neighbors under these new laws? Have you considered the wrongful deaths of innocent people killed by your police enforcing these laws? Wrongful death lawsuits come out of city coffers, and they're often very expensive. As I close, I'll be honest. The citizens of Lynchburg are now more aware than ever when each of you are up for reelection. Which of you stand for our right to defend ourselves has never been an issue of why I voted before now. You have the responsibility to protect your citizens from not only federal, but state unconstitutional laws being enforced. Please pass a resolution like Agenda number 28 on tonight's agenda, excuse me, Proposal number 28 on tonight's agenda, for the city of Lynchburg to become a sanctuary from Senate Bill 16, 18, and 64. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrett. Next, number 24 and 25 citizens asked to be removed, so number 26, hearing from a citizen, Mr. Karch Frankenfield.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Great job on the pronunciation. A lot of times, people kind of, you know. Oh, man. So I don't know if, can you hear me all right? I'm a little tall for this thing. So I wanted to thank you guys for an opportunity to speak tonight. I also wanted to be very, very clear. While I lived in Lynchburg for the last 11 years, I'm now literally a bad throw over the line into Campbell County, just on Timberlake. So stuff that happens in Lynchburg still matters greatly for me. As all reasonable people would agree, guns are amoral. They're inanimate objects. They're neither good nor evil. They're tools that are agreed also by all to be valuable in some respects, such as our military or the police. No one would say that our military should not have guns, nor our police. They have also, undeniably by all reasonable people, been used for some of our darkest moments as a state and as a union. The decision that we have to make for ourselves is the place for those tools in our modern society. The Constitution deals with this, but I'm not going to address that here. I'm a computer scientist and mathematician by trade, and as such, I strive to be data-driven. This is important because the Constitution very well could be wrong. It was written hundreds of years ago by people who, quite frankly, regardless of how intelligent they were at the time, had no idea what today would be. Similarly, as almost any psychologist would attest, psychological horror, such as we've seen in mass shootings around our entire nation, is also a terrible basis of sound decisions. Data's not perfect, but I would say pretty strongly it's the best thing that we have. So let's look at it. Guns are frequently used for murder. In fact, in 2016, there were just under 12,000 murders committed with firearms nationwide. That's the U.S., that's not any other nation, that's just us. By the same token, in a study, a questionnaire, 162,000 households within our nation had members who had used a gun for defense during a situation which they thought someone almost certainly would have been killed if they had not used a gun for protection. That's 13.5 times as many who attributed a gun to them being alive as those who were murdered by one. Even if we take, for example, the capacity that people have to misattribute what would have happened, perhaps they were, you know, racial profiling or anything else like that, if we halved the number, even if we quartered it, obviously, the households that have been protected by a firearm from what they believe to be lethal harm far outweighs the number of people who were killed on an annual basis in our nation. Similarly, guns are used for hundreds of thousands of violent crimes. And to be honest, the data here is a little bit closer. 600,000 violent crimes were committed by offenders that were visibly armed with a gun, so it's not even necessarily used it, but definitely had one present in 2014. As a matter of comparison, from that same aforementioned study, 1,029,615 households had members who had used a gun for self-protection or for the protection of property at homework or elsewhere, which, according to Virginia's definition of self-defense, would qualify as self-defense. 1.6 times as many people used a gun for self-defense as were violently attacked with one. According to the CDC, studies that directly assess the effect of actual defensive uses of guns, such as incidents in which a gun was used by the crime victim in the sense of attacking or threatening a particular offender, have found that consistently lower injury rates happen among gun-using crime victims compared with victims who used any other self-protective strategy. A victim armed with a gun when attacked is a less injured victim. I'm nearly done, I know the red light's blinking on me. A survey of male felons in 11 state prisons across the U.S. found that 34% of the felons had been scared off, shot at, wounded, or captured by an armed victim. 40% had decided not to commit a crime because they knew or believed that the victim was carrying a gun, and 69% personally knew other criminals who had fallen into the other two categories. All of this to say, according to the data, guns are a force for good in the hands of the majority of citizens. We should not be restricting the capabilities of our citizens because of fear of an offender, said Lynchburg should protect those citizens by becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city and fighting against SB 16. Check the data for yourself. All the numbers are actually from JustFacts.com, which is a nonprofit, peer-reviewed. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frankenfield. Next is hearing from a citizen, Mrs. Katie Webb Seifert.
My name is Katie Webb Seifert. I am a Lynchburg resident, a teacher, a gun owner, and a Democrat. I grew up with guns, spent many weekends on the range, and have a lot of venison in the freezer. On one side, we have people who have never touched a firearm, people who are horrified by the idea of a teenager practicing at a gun range, and people who cannot understand the term "wildlife management." On the other side, there are some who oppose background checks and declare every gun legislation to be unconstitutional confiscation. The fact is, most of us are in the middle. In May, our community was rocked by gun violence, and I comforted students who had lost a friend or family member. Six weeks later, I worked at a camp and lived at a cabin, literally 25 feet away from the rifle range, where campers learn respect for the weapon as they work towards their expert and even distinguished expert designations. So what does the middle look like? How do we prevent gun violence while protecting the rights of our sporting community? Some people cannot have guns due to their history of violence, so we support the rule of law with background checks. An individual presenting a clear, immediate danger to themselves and others could have their guns stored by the police, and when the individual is stabilized, they deserve due process to get their guns back. We can prevent youth from committing school shootings while supporting our apprentice and junior hunters. Every child in the Commonwealth, whether they have guns at home or not, should be taught in school that if they come across an unsecured weapon, to assume it's a gun and to notify an adult. Having spent time with rural Democrats last weekend, there was broad agreement that some of the provisions of proposed Senate Bill 16 appear to negatively impact our hunting and marksman communities. Senate Bill 16 goes too far. But so does this. Localities across the Commonwealth are pledging to refuse enforcement in measures that hearken back to our terribly history of massive resistance. We will not solve these issues in this room tonight. These are complex, and people across the Commonwealth are asking our legislators to thread the needle carefully. Passing local resolutions, refusing any potential legislation, and screaming at each other is not the answer. The path forward will take actual conversations and considering impacts of proposed legislation. We get that through civil dialogue with legislators in Richmond. City Council has been careful with its legislative agenda in the past, requesting changes to code that have specific, local, fiscal impact. I ask that this body retain that moderate stance and not add this issue to the city's 2020 legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb Seifert. Next is general business. That concludes all of the speakers on our agenda. Next is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Number 28, consideration of a resolution amending City Council's 2020 General Assembly legislative agenda to include language regarding the right of citizens to keep and bear arms. I'll turn to Councilmember Perro and Councilmember Helgelson. All right, Councilmember Helgelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this was great today, that we got to hear from so many people, as Ms. Seifert has said, we have a conversation, we have a dialogue. There's, everybody behind this dais obviously wants less criminal activity, they want less violence against citizens, against innocent people. We all agree. I think every one of us agree, whether you be Republican or Democrat, that we agree that we want less violence. With that, how do we get there? One thing that we're doing now is talking about it. This was very civil, this was good discourse, it was open, it was honest discussion. I think what we can all do is, we can use this not as divisive, but we can use this as unity. We can unify and recognize that we're all pulling the oars in the same direction for a safer community. How do we get there? Maybe, I think we can maybe differ. But when you look at our founders and our framers, it's quite amazing to look back at what they thought of. You know, they thought about these problems that could happen, but they also understood human nature. They understood that there's evil, and there's good. And the job and the role of government is to actually enforce against evil. It's not to enforce against good. And our framers really put that through. And it's so nice that it has been protected for so long. Now, as we're seeing what is before us today, it kind of reminds me, bringing it up a little closer to the time, is a gentleman, a retired Colonel, Dave Grossman, who studied this topic at length. And he looked and he said that lots of people, we may have different ideas and different concepts, but lots of people are, he classified as sheep, not in a negative way by any means, but he said they are sheep because they follow, because they obey, they work, they go to school, they do their thing, they take care of their families. They're not evil by any means. You then also have another class of people that he classified, and those are wolves. Those are evil people that want to take advantage of the sheep. They want to hurt the sheep, they want to kill the sheep, they want to go after the sheep. Then you have another class of person, and that is the sheepdog. We have some sheepdogs in here today. Those sheepdogs are the ones that actually protect the evil. These are folks that are maybe in our military, protecting us internationally. There are law enforcement, our police officers, that are willing and able to protect us here. There are folks that are dads that want to protect their young daughters. There are single mothers that want to protect their children, from domestic violence or abuse. And so when we look at this concept of the sheepdog, we can get thrown. You know, lots of people I recognize, they say, "Oh, my goodness, guns are bad." And to his exact analogy, a lot of times, the sheep, they look at the wolf being just as evil as the sheepdog, because they have weapons, they have teeth, they both hurt and they harm. But they're two entirely different premises. The wolf is there to protect, or the wolf is there, rather, to destroy and hurt. They're evil. The sheepdog is there to protect. I'm thankful that we have sheepdogs, many of our police officers. I'm glad that many of the citizens that are here understand that concept, and they're sheepdogs, that they are going to protect those other ones around them, whether they be a woman that is going to get threatened with violence, they're there in our grocery stores to protect. You know, when you look You know, when you look at some of these bills, and the reason why I think this is critical for Lynchburg to weigh in on this, is because some of these laws are actually telling our sheepdogs, our law enforcement, to go do the very opposite of what they're trained to do. They're telling them to not protect the sheep, but go after and arrest the sheep, go after and hunt down the sheep. Somebody who proposes that kind of legislation, I mean, to me, that is truly evil. Because our sheepdogs, that goes against completely their nature to go after an innocent person. Lots of these bills say, "Go after innocent people," as was stated earlier, that we have people that want to just defend their families, that have never committed a crime, and now they're going to be classified as a felon? And we want our law enforcement officers, our sheepdogs, to totally change their method and go after law-abiding citizens? To me, whoever proposes that is not just ignorant, but they're completely evil. Because that goes completely against our sheepdog nature and sheepdogs in general. This legislation is going to take 180 good officers and make them have a choice. I think that's a terrible choice. Most of these folks are spending all of their time and resources going after evil that they're trained to do. I do not want to see our officers having to make a choice between saying, "Oh, we can't uphold this law versus that law." My goodness, I think we can clarify, and I think we can classify, and we can back our police officers to say, "Let's not make our average citizen that happens to have a magazine that holds 11 bullets in it a felon. Let's have them focus their efforts and their resources on going after evil like our founders had. Let's have them focus, as a sheepdog is, is to protect the sheep and go after those evil wolves, because we understand those evil wolves are there. And let's not make our sheep into wolves just because some stroke of a pen." We have the ability today to actually tell our Legislative Assembly and our legislators that we, as the City Council, we as the city government, say we back our police officers. We don't want to have them make a choice in going after innocent citizens and making them a criminal. We can promote this legislation. Actually, it's an easy fix, too, quite frankly, because this legislative agenda, we have one of our legislators elected, he's already said he supports it. We have our state senators, we have two of them here, they said they support it. We have our other delegates in the area that they say support it. I think today, we're up to 61 counties. Everybody in the entire area says, "We support this." So it's not a tough ask to say, asking our Legislative Assembly, adding this on our legislative agenda, to say, "Let's support this, let's recognize," and I hope you all will consider this. I know lots of times, we may not be, as was stated by Ms. Seyfert, lots of people aren't familiar with guns. You know, Nathan had stated some very good things with regarding understanding evil. You know, as we look at this, let's really put this forward in our legislative agenda, and then after we do that, let's take it a step further. Well, I'll yield for that time being, but there's lots we can do, because I'd want to see less victims in Lynchburg. Yeah, I think somebody stated about how many weapons are utilized in stopping crime. I realize there's evil. Let's use those weapons to stop crime. Let's not have more innocent victims in Lynchburg. I think we can do this by actually stepping forward. It's not just an issue that is about our rights and Constitution. It actually affects us, and it affects our men in blue. Let's back our sheepdogs, let them do what they're trained to do, let them do what their conscience has trained them to do, and let them fulfill their oath that they are sworn to uphold. Thank you. I hope you all support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hegelson, that was very, that was an elegant approach. I very much appreciate what you said, sir. That was well spoken. I wanted to thank all of you that are here tonight to echo what Mr. Hegelson said. This is a civil discourse, and I, since, this could have been a rowdy affair. And I sincerely thank you for the way all of you have conducted yourselves in accordance with our policies, and I just really appreciate, it makes me proud to be a resident and citizen of Lynchburg. What we have here is an opportunity to send a message to Richmond. Yes, as you said, our legislate, local legislators are all on board, but we need to send a message to the governor, and lieutenant governor, and the Attorney General as well. And so that's why one of these proposals, or why would these proposals on the deck? You know, I was talking to somebody earlier, and he called me out on something. He said, "You guys are too late. Why didn't you do this when you first took a look at your legislative agenda?" And that was a really good question. We should have. I was just recently at a Virginia First Cities Board meeting, we had the opportunity to hear a couple of elected officials speak that represented that area. I would say that the representatives in that area weren't consistent, or didn't represent beliefs or consistent with my own, and I was absolutely flabbergasted at the agenda that they laid out. And I wish we would go more broadly than we're going, than we're talking about tonight, and maybe we should consider some further amendments to this legislative agenda to protect right to work, which affects our financing and our budgetary process terribly here. But that's not on the agenda tonight. What I want to do, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for Option A. Option A states that it be resolved, Lynchburg City Council amends its 2020 legislative agenda as follows. Public safety. Oppose any additional legislation infringing on the right of its citizens to keep and bear arms. New legislation is ill-advised due to the pending court cases that may have a significant impact on the proposed legislation.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to add to that. And I wanted to make sure that I am germane to the subject, Madam Mayor. And I was asked by Congressman Ben Klein if I would, if I could read a statement on his behalf. I'm happy to do so. In the interest of being germane, I'm going to eliminate a paragraph or so and make sure this is on topic. I do believe this is germane to the subject. This is from our U.S. Congressman of the 6th District, Congressman Ben Klein. I'm going to read it in his direct words. "To the citizens of the city of Lynchburg, I am thrilled to see the groundswell of support in the city of Lynchburg and across our Commonwealth in support of our Second Amendment rights to keep and bear arms. When Virginia debated whether or not to ratify the United States Constitution, our representatives insisted that the right to keep and bear arms was an essential liberty given to them by their Creator. And through their efforts, the Second Amendment was enshrined in the Constitution as part of the Bill of Rights. It would be a tragedy if our elected representatives in Richmond were now to see gun control laws that dismantled the very protections established by their predecessors." I'm going to skip the next paragraph, which talks about Congressman Klein's record, which is superlative. So the final paragraph is from Congressman Klein. "Your God-given liberties cannot be taken away by the actions of men, they can only be suppressed. Speak loudly and with one voice, and the incoming legislature in Richmond will hear you just as your city council hears you tonight. By expressing your First Amendment right to free speech here tonight, you better ensure that your Second Amendment rights will be protected in Richmond next month. I stand with you, the people of the city of Lynchburg, and I stand with all of those who defend our beloved Constitution. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America. Best regards, Ben Klein, Member of Congress." I think that is germane, that it's talking about the necessity, the need to speak to our governing bodies, you speaking to us, and us acting as one voice, speaking to the legislator and to the governor. So I very much appreciate the opportunity that is before us to take a firm stance supporting the citizens of Lynchburg and protecting our rights. Our voice provides a powerful influence in Richmond, and it's important to send a message to our legislators and our governor that encroachment upon our constitutional rights is unacceptable. Our founding fathers thought the right to keep and bear arms so important that they made it the second item in our Bill of Rights, before unreasonable search and seizure, before the protection of private property, before the right of trial by jury. It is only after the freedom of speech, press, and religion. One of the common statements that I hear is that guns kill people. I disagree. People kill people. The freedom of religion is protected by the First Amendment. However, some religious sects support terrorism in the United States. We support the First Amendment and do not argue that some religious sects should be suppressed, because it is one of the fundamental principles upon which our country was founded. I submit to you that the Second Amendment should be treated the same way and not be infringed upon. I would further submit that all the articles of our Constitution and its amendments be treated with the same respect. If there's a need to modify the Constitution, Article 5 instructs us how to do so. Until such time as the Constitution is modified, I stand by the way it is written and by the oath I took as an elected official to uphold it." So I hope council will join me in supporting the motions we put forward, and support Mr. Hegelson as well, and support our citizens of the city of Lynchburg.
Thank you, Councilmember Perrow. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also want to thank all of you for being here, expressing your insights and opinions very clearly and understandably. The proposed Second Amendment sanctuary movement implies that Lynchburg should not comply with state laws that it deems to restrict the Second Amendment liberties. As a subdivision of the Commonwealth of Virginia, Lynchburg must comply with all of Virginia's laws. Likewise, each member of City Council took an oath to not only obey the Constitution of the United States, but all of Virginia's laws. Therefore, the sanctuary movement could only serve to express Lynchburg's concerns about the effects of enforcing laws affecting fundamental rights guaranteed by the Second Amendment in the Bill of Rights, but it cannot lawfully be enforced. Additionally, City Council's policies and procedures demand that we not express opinions on theoretical issues or those beyond our jurisdictional authority. I find no reason for us to now deviate from those protocols. If the City Council wishes to communicate any concern to leaders in Richmond, we have ample means to do so, through our established legislative agenda and other channels. If Richmond leadership ignores us and enacts laws offensive to us, we can resort to a very sound judicial system to redress our grievances. I want to further elaborate on the topic. Be it known that I am generically opposed to any and all legislative efforts that restrict any constitutional right or liberty. Similarly, I affirm that the rights insured by the Second Amendment are as significant as any other constitutional right. Nevertheless, rational limitations have been repeatedly authorized upon all constitutional rights for more than two centuries. The United States Supreme Court has a standard for reviewing laws which clearly limit a fundamental constitutional right. That standard of review applies a strict scrutiny test to the targeted law. That strict scrutiny test requires that the targeted law be, one, strictly scrutinized to determine whether it promotes a compelling governmental purpose; two, whether it is crafted in its narrowest fashion; and three, whether it adopts the least restrictive means to accomplish the compelling governmental purpose. So I ask, is there a compelling governmental purpose that is promoted by further limiting the Second Amendment? There may be. I am reasonably confident that the primary purpose of every firearm is either to kill, maim, or destroy someone or something. I am equally confident that firearms have increasingly been designed and produced to inflict death and destruction in volumes and at rates that are far greater than those familiar to the 18th century authors of the Constitution and of our Bill of Rights. As we too often observe, increasingly destructive firearms are regularly used to kill and maim massive numbers of innocent people throughout our nation. Reducing or preventing that harm to innocent people is a compelling government purpose. However, while there is much debate about the most prudent means to reduce such firearm mayhem and still preserve the essential qualities of the Second Amendment, reasonable measures certainly should be taken to keep weapons out of the hands of the mentally ill or those expressing a clear intent to harm others. If a Second Amendment sanctuary proposal is simply designed to tell Richmond that the city of Lynchburg reserves the option to refuse to enforce state laws we find offensive, then we should remember that pursuing similar options have been previously attempted in Virginia and was shown to be unlawful. Specifically, you may recall that in the late 1950s and early 1960s, some Virginia counties and cities engaged in the infamous practice of massive resistance to court and statutory directives requiring Virginia localities to racially integrate their public schools. Those acts of local defiance and disobedience of laws have been broadly denounced at all levels of law, reason, and practicality. I believe it would be equally unlawful and irrational for Lynchburg to adopt a similar policy of massive resistance and disobedience to any state law affecting firearms in the Second Amendment. As I said, if there are conflicts between the U.S. Constitution and a state law, the proper solution is through the judicial system envisioned by that Constitution. To enact a statutory resolution, excuse me, to enact a sanctuary resolution ignores a primary mandate of the U.S. Constitution, that being that the judiciary is the third branch of government by which legal disputes are to be resolved. No doubt, it is sometimes difficult to balance conflicting practical elements and underlying principles set out in state laws and those in parts of the Constitution. But the Constitution charges the courts with the responsibility to resolve those conflicts, not city councils or boards of supervisors. As we speak, the U.S. Supreme Court is considering whether to adjudicate a former New York City ordinance that required a license to possess a firearm in that city. No one could own any gun unless they had a license, and they kept the gun in their home and could take it out only for the purpose of transporting it to a legal firing range by the most direct and uninterrupted route. If, argument was made on that case a week ago yesterday. If the Supreme Court renders a decision on the merits of that case, the legal standards for testing the constitutional validity of a law affecting the Second Amendment may change on issues contemplated by some of the bills proposed by the passage of the Virginia General Assembly, such as Senate Bill 16. Since these legal standards may change within the next year, and June is the projected date when the Supreme Court says it would render a decision in that case, it is arguable that Virginia General Assembly could not legislate in ways that may limit the Second Amendment liberties until the Supreme Court renders a decision. So for a law to be passed this next spring, and the Supreme Court render a decision next summer, it may invalidate whatever the General Assembly does. Lynchburg would be caught possibly in a bind if the two, the court decision and the legislature, don't coincide and there's a difference. What do we do? Do we enforce an unconstitutional state statute, or do we comply with the U.S. Supreme Court? Therefore, I would ask that the motion that was made by Councilmember Perrow be amended to state as follows. "The city of Lynchburg opposes any legislation directly impacting the Second Amendment of the Constitution until the U.S. Supreme Court resolves the issues presented in the New York City Second Amendment case now pending before it." Thank you.
You're offering that as a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to your motion.
And you would be willing to support that amendment? If we accepted that amendment, you'd be willing to support it?
Yes, I definitely would.
I think I can... Madam Mayor, I believe that the suggested language accomplishes the intent of my motion. I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perrow, Councilmember Nelson. Is there any further discussion on the motion that has been made?
On the substitute motion?
On the substitute motion?
It's a friendly amendment, it's just...
Right, same motion. Right, same motion. Any further discussion?
Can you restate that motion, please? I'm sorry.
Gladly. Quote, "The city of Lynchburg opposes any legislation directly impacting the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution until the U.S. Supreme Court resolves the issues presented in the New York City Second Amendment case now pending before it." So they need to wait till the case has been decided. So they need to wait till the case has been decided.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may, what that does is it clarifies in the original motion, it says, "Don't make any changes to items affecting the Second Amendment, to the citizen's right to keep and bear arms." And then the second says was, "New legislation is ill-advised due to the pending court cases." So I think Mr. Nelson, by his friendly amendment, has put a finer point on that. It doesn't change, it really doesn't change the intent of the original motion, so that's why I accepted it as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, thank you. Does that clarify for you, Councilmember Walder?
I think so.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion and the friendly amendment of that motion? Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to echo what the others have said and thank you all very much for joining us here this evening. I know the hour is late, it's 10 o'clock. You have waded through a lot to be with us here this evening, and I want to thank the folks who shared some pretty powerful testimony here with us tonight. So thank you very much for offering your thoughts, as Councilmember Nelson said, very clearly and compellingly. And so I agree that this is an important issue, and it's one that folks, for very good reason, have strong feelings about. And I think as a community, we need to be having this conversation about firearms and our rights, with our families, with our neighbors, with our friends, and most importantly, with our state representatives, including a distinguished member who's with us this evening, and members of Congress. I'm not going to comment on the bills that are being proposed in state legislature. And I want to say why, and it's not, I'm separating out my feelings on those bills. I think because this is a national and state issue. It's a constitutional issue that's been brought up, and it's one that Lynchburg City Council doesn't have any legal authority to affect. If we were to pass a resolution on this issue, it wouldn't carry legal weight, as has been stated, in case law bears that out. We have to enforce the laws, that's our job, it's our oath, it is, to enforce the laws that the state passes. We can disagree with those laws, and that's why we have elections, to vote the people out who put those laws in place and hopefully overturn the laws. That's what elections are for. A resolution from us would just be an expression of how this community feels about an issue, but it wouldn't carry legal weight. And that's why we have a justice system, that's why we have a judicial system, so that if we disagree with laws, first we have elections, and then the courts can bear out whether or not that law is constitutional. Now, City Council traditionally stays out of partisan political debates, and I think that this is a wise policy, because it's not our job to get involved in national and state-level debates. Our job is to fix potholes, work on public schools, and think about what our communities' needs are and try to address them, things like safe bridges, parks, economic development. It's not to weigh in on constitutional legal questions that can only be decided by state and federal lawmakers in the federal court system. So I think that that's where this conversation belongs, at the state and national level. We can't, again, we can't actually do anything about it. The only thing that we would do by passing a resolution is to say what this community thinks, and as has been demonstrated, the community here is divided on this question. So I think, you know, if you look around the room tonight, there are people with incredibly strong feelings on either side. And if we were to pass a resolution, it would be divisive for this community. And why do that if we actually can't control this issue? So I'll be opposing a resolution or an amendment to the city's legislative agenda on the grounds of while this conversation is very important, I do not want to diminish what folks have shared with us here tonight. I do think that this conversation belongs at the state and national level. I strongly encourage folks to reach out to their state and congressional representatives to let them know how they feel, so that they can enact laws that respond to your will. I'll be doing that myself. That's where legally the change has to happen. So I'll be opposing the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, again, I would like to thank all of our citizens, I'm losing my voice, it's been a long day. I'd like to thank all of our citizens for your comments that you have made in reference to the Second Amendment, and I believe it is so important for us to honor the Second Amendment. Again, I'm going to defer to our state legislators and see how the track goes and continue to follow. I have not read the Senate Bill 16 or any bill that has been proposed yet, so I need to see what bills have been proposed and talk to our legislators about those. But I do appreciate all the persons that have come out today and voiced their concerns, and your voice has been heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Dolan?
I want to thank everybody also for being here tonight, and I really appreciate the respectful participation that everyone had. And I also, all my colleagues here tonight all had really, really powerful statements to make that I think are, going forward, will be very helpful. I strongly feel that this is a matter for the constitutional scholars and for the state and national legislative bodies. Further, without a clear mandate from the majority of our constituents, I find it problematic to add this piece to our legislative agenda. This statement gives the appearance that we're representing the voices of the majority, and as you can see here this evening, the majority did not show up for reasons that I'm not sure of. Obviously, if new gun laws are passed, they will have to pass constitutional muster and the rule of law will prevail. From a practical standpoint, this is a meaningless gesture without a compelling reason that only serves to be divisive. We're just better than that. I will not support amending our legislative agenda with this.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Hagelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, and I can appreciate the concepts and the punting, but, you know, what's interesting is the framers of our Constitution and the framers of this country made this document not legalese, it made it the people's document, that we can read it and we can understand it. And it's not just a matter of punting to the judiciary. This is a matter, we're not just a republic, we are a compound republic. The compound republic says state, local, and federal, judicial, executive, legislative, we're a branch of the government. And so we don't just punt, because we actually have legislative authority of our local $380 million city budget, which has a police department. And I think with this, we can tell our city manager and tell our police department not to enforce unconstitutional laws. And I realize the fact that lots of people have opinions on different things and we like to give it to somebody else, but this is us, and this is our citizens, and this is our city. You know, for us to just say, "Well, let somebody else deal with it," that's not the issue. I mean, we got to stand in the gap because of the fact that this actually does affect us locally. I mean, these are local laws that are coming down the pike. This is local laws that are going to affect our police budget. These are local laws that are going to affect where our, is it going to be harder for us to recruit and retain police officers? That say there is no way on God's green earth they're going to enforce some of these unconstitutional laws? And we're going to force them to do something like that? You know, with that being the case, and I can appreciate some of you saying that not everybody's spoken, and so what we have here before us is simply the legislative agenda. I thought this was going to be an easy one. The legislative agenda tells our legislators, "Hey, we agree with you, because you're already going to do it, because you were elected by masses of the people in this area to defend and uphold the Constitution." And so apparently, this isn't, we need to hear from more citizens. And so with that, I've asked the city manager that we cannot just have this on our legislative agenda, that on September, or January 14th, that we actually have a public hearing on the actual Second Amendment sanctuary city status. So we don't just have it as a legislative agenda, but we actually have a public hearing, because, as I just heard a minute ago, that the majority hasn't spoken. So if there are more people that want to come, because quite frankly, when I look at this the way it is, and it's surprising how many people signed up to speak, 15. 15 people that knew over about a week ago to sign up on something at 12 o'clock, by 12 o'clock on a Wednesday. So I think it would be wise for us to actually have a public hearing, so we can hear from all the citizens, they don't have to sign up a week in advance, and they can come up and so we can hear. And I think with that, that motion, it doesn't need to be a motion, it just needs to be the fact of two city council members asking. I've asked the city manager for that to be on our, as a public hearing, January 14th, if that can work, and hopefully, if somebody else would like to ask for that as well?
I'd certainly be supportive of listening to the public voice.
And so then we can have, what I heard stated before, you know, wisely, that hearing from citizens is a good, it's a good medicine, or a good mistress, as I heard it once stated. So hopefully, we can hear from that, so we can hear the citizens, and really take this from a legislative agenda to actually making Lynchburg one that respects the Second Amendment, because quite frankly, when we read lots of law, we read the Federalist Papers, we read Mulberry versus Madison, any law that was repugnant against the Constitution is void. And so when our guys have got to decide, are we going to uphold the Constitution that we swore an oath to? Or are we going to have some state law because some bureaucrat in Richmond says you shouldn't have a weapon or a magazine that has 11 rounds in the chamber? Let's not have our police officers have to make that decision. Let's let them have a free conscience, and so I do hope that you will support the legislative agenda. Legislative agenda, I think, is quite easy, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to focus back on the motion that's on the table right now. I certainly, you know, I support an opportunity for the public to speak at large, and I certainly don't see why that, certainly wouldn't hurt at all, and I think it'd be a good thing. All right. So to this point, and Mr. Wright, I do appreciate what you're saying about trying to stay out of larger affairs, but there's been a real upswell in this. We have a petition of 1,400 signatures in the area. I think that, from what I've heard, that people are demanding that we do take this up, and I'm going to respond, I'm responding to that by proposing this motion and the amendment that I've accepted, as well as, I am confident that Ward 4, which I represent, that I'm representing the principles of Ward 4 by bringing this forward. So I feel very firm in that stance. So I hope that you'll join me in supporting this amendment. It's, as Councilmember Hagelson said, it's an easy lift. Let's just move this forward, show our support, and we'll get on with the rest of our business this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to respond to some of the very good points that Councilmember Wright mentioned. I think the quote was, "We have no legal weight." Well, we don't have any legal weight in enacting legislation in Richmond, but we certainly do have legal weight with regard to what happens in Lynchburg. But what happens in Richmond can affect what happens in Lynchburg. I might say that the regulations, the facts of the case in New York are very similar to what might be the facts of the Virginia statute if those proposed bills end up being enacted. It is the banning or the licensing or permitting of gun ownership, and the Supreme Court's going to decide whether, or ownership of a magazine of a certain quantity. And the Supreme Court's going to give us, the entire country, its standard as to how those types of laws are going to be looked at. And that standard's going to be known probably next June. If any statute is passed that sets one standard according to the Virginia Legislature, and the Supreme Court sets another standard, then Lynchburg is going to be shackled by either having to spend the money to file a lawsuit to have the state law declared unconstitutional, and I frankly don't want our budget money to be going attacking a statute that's unconstitutional when it could have been written properly by waiting until that court order from the Supreme Court was known. Or if the legislature passes a statute and says, and this is what usually happens, I've been an attorney for 43 years, I've been on this council for almost 10 years next month. I know that legislatures tend to try to find common ground, and rather than issue a blanket prohibition or completely ban something, they license it or require a permit, and then look at why the right of ownership, as in New York, should be allowed to some people but denied to other people. Well, what happens when we, as a city, have to issue licenses for persons to own a certain size ammunition clip or a certain type of gun? We got to hire employees to do background checks, to analyze the propriety of whether that license should be issued, and that affects our budget. So that decision does have legal impact on Lynchburg. As has been said, it is difficult enough to fill our PD with qualified officers and administrators. To have to hire additional persons to prepare background checks and assessments on citizens in order to see whether they need or do not deserve a permit or license to own a gun would be a cumbersome expense and burden. For that reason, I think the state legislature would be well advised to just hold off until the Supreme Court case is decided, and we would all be better for it, too, to not go shuffling in and try to be making a decision or saying, "It's not us, it's Richmond." And I will say, although I always like to listen to the general public in public hearings, I don't want to have citizens of Lynchburg talking to us in January, I want to have them talking to Richmond in January, because that's a direct communication to the folks that are going to have the authority to make a decision, not us. But I do want this issue to be on our legislative agenda, so we don't have to do that in January. We can move it along to the appropriate venues.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. And it has been suggested, I do have comments that I will end with if no one else has, but I will also defer to the city manager regarding our public hearing rules and process. So Ms. Verchek?
Madam Mayor, I may need some help from the city attorney on this, but your rules of procedure state that unless required by law, no item will be scheduled for a public hearing unless by unanimous consent or the vote of a majority of the council to hold a public hearing on the item.
Thank you, Ms. Verchek. Mr. Irwin?
That's correct, if it would require a majority vote of council to schedule a public hearing on this issue. So council will have to decide if it believes it will hear any new comments at a public hearing that it didn't hear tonight, or if it would just hear more of the same, you know, comments.
Thank you. All right, so I am ready to just, everyone has had the opportunity to express their opinion. I will just go ahead and say I will not be supporting the motion. We have heard from many citizens this evening, and I appreciate the passion and opinion on all sides. I do believe this is a matter that we should allow our legislators to make the decisions and to hear the voices of their citizens. To take this on at the local level is premature to me, and not giving our legislators the opportunity to do their job at the state level. So I'm not willing to commit this current body or future councils to stand against our state legislative body before giving them the opportunity to do their due diligence, and I respect each of the council members' opinions and Councilmember Nelson's just now, in giving them the opportunity to do their job in representing citizens down in Richmond. I believe that no action right now is the best action for our city. I have heard from many people throughout this community on all sides of this issue. So while they may not have been represented equally on this tonight docket, there were many citizens who had thoughts and opinions, and I've heard them all. So if there is no further discussion, I am ready to vote on this matter. I am a person, I believe that there are strong opinions, I believe in rights, I believe in the Second Amendment. I also live by a belief that I'm not a fearful person. I don't believe that there is false evidence appearing real to me. And so before then, and until our legislators do their job, I will be voting against this motion. So if there is no further discussion, I will call for the vote. I see Councilmember Hagelson. And there is no opportunity for the crowd to present discussion or argument while counsel is in deliberation. Thank you, Councilmember Hagelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one other item after we vote on this one, I hope it'll still be, since the new information was just brought about by the city manager and the city attorney, that we can then bring another...
We can bring back a motion.
Yes.
Yes, we can bring back another motion. Yes, we can. All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote, and the motion fails four to three. Thank you very much. Now I will entertain a motion to bring back consideration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As was stated up here today by several in the majority, that said they didn't hear from citizens from the reason why they voted against this, I think having public discourse is healthy. I... I think having public discourse is healthy. I've heard from someone wiser than I said, unrestrained, "Civil and public discourse is my mistress." So I hope that we can actually have a public hearing, as was, I was asked, as I asked a moment ago, until I recognized a, a different rule. So I'll make that motion that we have a public hearing about making Lynchburg become a Second Amendment sanctuary, so we can hear from the citizens that weren't here today. So.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion regarding the motion?
Nothing else to add. I hope you'll support hearing from our citizens.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perro?
Yes, ma'am. And I, I, I think it's an important thing, always an important thing, to hear our citizens' opinions. Yeah, it's, I mean, we're talking about probably taking a public hearing and having the full council meeting at, at the city auditorium at E.C. Glass High School, because I imagine it'd be a, a significant turnout, as is evidenced by the various board of supervisors' meetings in the area and some of the other city meetings that we've, we've heard about. Obviously, this room wasn't big enough to support the crowd that we had tonight. And I know all of us are thinking, staff and, and council alike, if we're here at ten thirty now, then that's probably going to not wrap up until the wee hours of the morning there. But you know what? That's what we get paid to do. And just this afternoon, city council against some of our opposition voted to allow themselves a pay increase. So this is a chance to earn the money. You know, let's, let's work.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion on the motion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes four to three. So there will be the opportunity for, does everyone cast their vote, right? Yes. So there will be the opportunity for a public hearing on this matter in January.
January fourteenth, I believe, is the first.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Do you want to make the five?
Do we do a five?
Thank you. If everyone can please quietly leave, we are continuing our meeting. No, why?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Oh, I got you. Thank you. We are continuing our meeting. If everyone would please leave in according with a quiet movement, thank you. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget and appropriate thirty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Y'all can have your conversations outside of D.C. Ordinarily quietly, so that they continue their meeting and get their jobs done. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just, Madam Mayor, this came forward at city council, or our finance committee meeting today, and the finance committee made recommendation for approval. And I bring that forward as a motion.
All right. Thank you. It has been, it has been brought forward as a motion with...
From the finance committee.
Okay, if we can hold one moment, because we're rushing through a motion that I'd like to read completely in its entirety for the viewing audience. Also, I have Vice Mayor Dolan, a council member, who would like to make some statement.
Well, because I, I didn't mean to vote for a public hearing, and I hit the wrong button. And then when I looked up there.
Oh, all right. So we are not...
I don't know what we do about that.
So hold one moment. We have a motion on the table.
Walter said I had to do it now, so.
Okay. Can I defer to Mr. Irwin for clarification of...
I think it's proper to go ahead and dispose of the motion that's on the floor, this item, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Dolan's issue.
Okay. All right, thank you. So right now, the motion on the floor is the consideration of a resolution to, to amend the fiscal year 2020 general fund budget and appropriate the thirty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars with resources from the General Fund Reserve for contingencies to provide funding to the Electoral Board Registries' Office for estimated cost associated with the March third, 2020 presidential and Democratic City Council primary. A third quarter budget request may occur due to possible U.S. Senate or U.S. House of Representative primaries in June. This motion has been made, and it was brought to Finance Committee this morning. Councilmember Hegelson just said there is no need for a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion that's on the table? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Now, thank you. I will defer back to Mr. Irwin for the consideration of Vice Mayor Dolan and what she has mentioned and discussed about the previous vote regarding the scheduled public hearing.
I mean, I think it's appropriate for Councilmember Dolan to, you know, explain.
I was, I was not even looking, and I hit the wrong button, though. When I looked up on the thing, it was yes, and I meant to say no.
Okay. So what do we do? Are you asking that a new motion, are we asking that a new motion be held regarding scheduling a hearing?
City council's rules of procedure are for the convenience of city council. And if you have a member of council who said they mistakenly voted, they did not mean, you know, to vote for that item, I have never known city council to say, "Well, even though you made a mistake, we're going to try to hold you to that." I think the appropriate would be a motion to, you know, a motion to be made to, to retake the vote.
All right. And so do I hear a motion to retake the vote on scheduling a hearing for January regarding the Second Amendment sanctuary?
Point of order before you...
Yes.
You know, another motion was already on the floor. I, I recognize that, you know, somebody now may have changed their mind on the vote. The, the problem is, we had a house full of people watching it on television, a house full of people being broadcast up in the room upstairs. After everybody leaves, after they're already told that there's going to be a public hearing on January fourteenth, after they saw the four to three green lights to red lights up there, after everybody's out in their car, gone home, now we decide to change the vote. Now that, I cannot tolerate and I cannot abide. I do not think that is wise. I don't think it's judicious. I don't think it's, you know, if, if there was a mistake that happened, let's, what's the harm in having a public hearing as was stated by your own words? So to change a vote after another motion has already been on the floor, a, a secondary item later, after everybody's cleared out, I just don't think that is good for the citizens. I don't think it's good for, for respecting people's time and our citizens for being all sitting out here, to then change the vote and say we don't want to have a public hearing. I've seen lots of things in my life, but that's, that's not a good one. I, I don't think that is, is, is in order to go forward with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Jeff, I think you're painting, painting a picture that's not quite accurate, because I immediately, when I saw it, stood up and went towards Robin. And I guess, while everybody was leaving, so it was too late.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor regarding the scheduled hearing?
Madam Mayor, I would move the motion as a matter of courtesy, that I think we have traditionally, it sounds like afforded to other council members.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There is a motion in second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Wilder? Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Had this been any other vote, I would, I would support it. I certainly understand that sometimes we make a mistake, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure I've done it before in the past, we've reconsidered. There were, we were at capacity, and the public saw the vote. I think it's a bad idea to reconsider. If, if we do revote this, I hope that we, we choose to go forward with the public hearing, because I feel like there's a commitment out there. So I'm going to oppose this motion, and I'll continue. So let me make, make sure I'm very clear on this.
Correct.
This is the motion to reconsider. Is that correct?
This is the motion to reconsider the vote for a scheduled hearing in January. Yes.
Miss, okay. So, all right.
To, to schedule a hearing in January.
What is...
What this would do is wipe out the, the motion that passed and then take up the issue again and vote on it again.
So that's a second motion. So this is a motion to reconsider, a procedural motion to reconsider. We will vote the motion, whether or not we reconsider the item. Then there'll be another, then another motion will be brought forward, probably by either...
Correct.
Mr. Hegelson or myself. Okay.
All right. So everyone understands... Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment. I think Councilmember Hegelson makes a very good point, that everybody was here en masse witnessing deliberation and a vote, and then when they leave, we change that. The suggestion is somehow, but I'm not sure what the suggestion to them or impression would be. My concern would be that if they didn't know that the decision had been reversed, then that would be one thing. But there's going to be more than a month between now and whenever that public hearing in January is going to be scheduled. And I have a lot of faith in our media to communicate to the public that it was a mistake, and it wasn't anything clandestine or deceptive, and it simply was a mistake. And that can clarify the, to the public. And the fact that everyone was here doesn't mean that somehow we could be influenced by what they were doing. They were not participating in our discussion. This was not a public hearing. So whether they're here or, or home and we vote really is somewhat of a moot point as to their involvement in our dialogue. So I, I think, you know, it's unfortunate that it happened, but I would support a revote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes five to two in support of a new motion regarding the opportunity to schedule a hearing. Do I have a motion? We are now voting on the motion to, or the, if I have a motion from council member regarding scheduling a hearing in January.
If you want to make the motion this time, it, last time was successful.
Madam Mayor, I move that we have a public hearing at the earliest convenient, at the earliest possible convenience, preferably that second Tuesday in January, to address the Second City Amendment.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Nope. Yes, Councilmember Perro?
I'd just like to ask the people, ask those that support the motion in the past to continue to support it. And for those that are not supporting the motion, just be considerate of, of the group that was here and the citizens of Lynchburg. And, and let's go ahead and just have the public, the public hearing.
Councilmember Hegelson?
And I can realize that maybe at the time that you, a mistake, and I appreciate courtesy and whatnot. It, it just, I mean, we had such a nice civil discourse. We had such a good time here today, actually, talking about stuff that's tough to talk about. It was done very above board. There's unity. There's understanding that we've got to fight against evil, wherever evil is. And so with that, we also heard that lots of people weren't here that had a different perspective. I've got lots of emails from people that said, "Don't make it a sanctuary city." Great. So have a public hearing so we can hear from people. You know, I don't think there's ever a time that we go wrong if, by hearing from our citizens, especially when such a last minute, lots of people just showed up today because they care about this. This is something they're passionate about. And I can appreciate that you maybe have hit the wrong button, but I hope you hit the right button this time by actually saying yes to the citizens. And actually consciously say, "You're going to switch your vote," because of the fact that last time, maybe you hit the wrong button, but this time, dang gummit, lots of these people that were here. There's hundreds of people that were sitting here and upstairs that, that left at least with some modicum of hope that said, "Hey, this council at least wants to hear from us regarding our constitutional rights. Let's have that public hearing. Let's hear from them." And, and support Councilmember Perro's motion to have that public hearing on January fourteenth, as stated earlier.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Dolan, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hegelson, the reason I was not wanting to support a public hearing was because, as we saw tonight, those people that were against a sanctuary city did not show up tonight for obvious reasons. They were afraid, they were afraid they're going to be harassed. I got lots of emails about people that wanted to come. We had a number of people that dropped off. And the reason they dropped off is that they heard what happened in other areas. So I think, I thought, if we have a public hearing, they're not going to show up again. So you're just going to hear from the same people. We're going to hear the same stuff we heard tonight. We're not going to hear the other side.
So, I mean, I don't understand how you can make us broad assumptions about certain people acting like they're violent. I mean, we, we sat here with lots of people tonight that had zero level of violence towards any other person. They were respectful to every one of us. They're respectful to the, I mean, I bet we can go around and maybe find one wrapper of gum out there. I mean, so to, to make an assumption that these people are bad, oh my goodness, that's even worse. Let's hear from both sets of people. And let's, let's not keep playing into this that they are so afraid that they couldn't show up. I had several people that emailed me. And they emailed me about, about saying, "Don't make Lynchburg a sanctuary city." And I emailed them back. I emailed them back my actual thoughts. And they said, "Oh, you're so mean and divisive." It's like, I'm giving you just facts and opinion. I could have just avoided you. I could have just not responded. I could have ignored you. But I don't think it's rude for us to respond to somebody. But for somebody to, to say, "Oh, my goodness, woe is me. I, I'm, you know, a victim," come up and, and speak. That, that's what we do. We, we hear from people. It's all safe and secure. I mean, they'd love to hear from them. And so I hope you will really consider that those people that you say you represent that didn't show up today will, will be gladly escorted in. We have wonderful sheepdogs in the back that would gladly make sure they're protected. And so let's continue the public hearing like we told everybody a few minutes ago.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder, followed by Councilmember Wright?
Honestly, I don't, I feel if we have another public hearing, I feel like we're not going to get anything different. But I am uncomfortable with persons leaving here thinking we're going to have a public hearing. I really don't feel comfortable by saying, "Oh, we're not going to have one now." I think that's going to cause, right now, our nation is so divided and has so many issues. It's, it's, it's so, it's, it's challenging with our nation currently. It is such a divided nation. I, I feel we just, we need to go ahead and, I feel like we need to go ahead and have a public hearing, even though I feel we're going to get to some of the same things again and let persons voice their concerns. I would prefer to wait until the General Assembly presents something, you know, the state, the assembly presents something, so we at least have a better way of knowing which direction the state is going in. Right now, we don't have any firm proposals, to my knowledge, or I haven't seen anything presented. And we could talk more about that later. But I feel that our citizens should have at least a platform to go ahead and present themselves. Since we kind of, they're left here kind of thinking that, I, I just don't feel comfortable in, you know, going back and saying, "Oh, we're not going to do it now." I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. So I'd rather go ahead and have it, and then give those who did not show up, have them opportunity to come as well and voice and mention their concerns. And we can listen to the citizens of our community, go for their, as they wanted to leave here, and they're saying, "We switched the vote." Who might not understand what happened, I don't want them to kind of get the wrong impression of what we did.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. And I really appreciate the, the Councilmember Wilder's point. And so I just want to, just, I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, Vice Mayor, but I, I just, I feel like, I feel like we need just to reassert that everybody here is of, is of good intent. And we're not trying to, to diminish anybody or their voice or their perspective, or cast anybody as a bad person. I think this is, this is one of those issues where people can disagree. And disagreement's okay. That doesn't make you a bad person just because you disagree with somebody else. So I feel like that's really important to say, because I feel like we, we might be moving into territory that might be demonizing of, of certain folks or their opinions, and I don't want to go there. I think that, I think that we should, you know, keep things civil and recognize that as rational friends we can disagree.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Does everyone understand the motion? Any questions or clarifications? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. And the motion passes four three. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda...
Wait a minute. Oops. Sorry, just kidding.
Is number thirty, consideration of introducing a resolution approving the issuance of up to...
I was only trying to be, bring levity, I'm sorry.
I understand. Thank you very much, and the city manager has her direction. Thank you. Consideration of introducing a resolution approving the issuance of up to $28 million in tax-exempt revenue bonds for the rehabilitation of the James Crossing Apartments located at 808 Greenfield Drive through the Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Staff will provide a presentation, and I believe it is Mr. Hurlbert Jr., the bond counsel, and Herschel Keller, our attorney for LRHA. Please feel free to come forward. Thank you. And thank you for sitting through this long evening of civil discourse and dialogue. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, sir. Sure, go ahead. I thought, oh, great, are we staff going to get the presentation? Are you going to...
You are the staff.
We are the staff tonight.
Right, you are the staff.
Good evening. Herschel Keller, I'm an attorney in Lynchburg. I work for the firm Gentry Lock and represent the Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority. Atlantic Housing Foundation, which is a mission-based low-income housing developer, has requested the Housing Authority to issue twenty, up to $28 million in low-income housing finance bonds to renovate, rehabilitate the James Crossing Apartment Complex. These are conduit financing bonds. They are technically obligations of the authority, but only to the extent of the assets that are pledged to support the bonds, to fund the bonds. The Council's approved these types of bonds issued previously in the past for things such as the construction of the post office, the federal courthouse, the Human Services Building, and the renovation of Housing Authority Building, as well as a number of housing projects over the years. I think Mr. Hurlbert can speak to specific questions about the project, and I can answer any questions you might have, but that's generally what we're seeking tonight. The process is that the Authority, the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, has adopted a resolution to express its intent to issue these bonds. It then, and that resolution comes before council, requesting council approve the issuance of the bonds, and if it does, the bond documents will be negotiated, and the Housing Authority will adopt yet another final resolution to authorize the issuance of the bonds, probably sometime in the first quarter of 2020.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herschel and Keller. And I know, I'm so used to sitting in the meeting and saying Herschel, so that's why I use both names. Thank you, Mr. Hurlbert.
Sure. Good evening, members of council, and thank you for the opportunity to be here with you all tonight. As Herschel just described, this request is before you to adopt a resolution which will approve the issuance by the Housing Authority of up to $28 million of multifamily housing revenue bonds, the proceeds of which would be used to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of the James Crossing Apartments project. The Housing Authority has been very thorough, I will say, in their process with us and with the folks at Atlantic Housing. We've had a couple of sessions with members of the Housing Authority, and they adopted an inducement resolution last week on this project, which is also a part of the package that you have in front of you. And as Herschel indicated importantly, the Housing Authority here serving as a conduit bond issuer, the bonds do not represent a debt of the Housing Authority, except in the context of the repayment source being the revenues generated by the operation of the project. These bonds are not a general obligation of the Housing Authority, not a general obligation of the city, unlike the general obligation bonds that you all approved earlier tonight. No pledge of the faith and credit or taxing power of the city involved in this particular issue. I guess another matter I think that I probably should point out is that the resolution also includes approval of a standalone agreement. Started out as a memorandum of understanding, but now has been re-characterized as an agreement between the city, the Housing Authority, and the owner of the property. That there is, there was a desire, I think, to ensure that there would always be a dialogue established between the Housing Authority and the city and the, and the new owner. And I think this agreement is intended to accomplish that and does, I think, accomplish that, but that is a little bit unusual for a resolution like this, so I figured, I'd point it out specifically. Otherwise, the resolution in front of you looks and walks and talks basically like any normal sort of governing body approval resolution for a conduit bond issue being undertaken by a housing authority under the Housing Authority's laws. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have as far as the bond issuance process or so forth. And then we do have also Dan French here from Atlantic Housing, who is the chairman of the board and founder of the company, actually, and also a representative from our management company and who I just met tonight. So he's here to address questions you might have about the property specifically.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, both of you. I will disclose, I am a member of the Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board, and I will defer right now also to our chairman of the board, who is Councilmember Perro. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the Housing Authority did, did have an opportunity to review this, and I think the key takeaway is this, I think the term you used was statement of agreement?
It's just characterized as an agreement right now, but it started out as a memorandum of understanding.
Well, the agreement that we have is, I think, a key component to this. Previously, when, when the Housing Authority has looked at ways to renovate buildings and using this sort of conduit financing, we've seen those projects fall into disrepair over a extended period of time. This agreement opens channels of communication with, with the developer and really will help facilitate, you know, the way that this, this redeveloped center is, is managed. And I think you'll look and you'll see that the city is being an active partner in this because this is a, this is a troubled neighborhood, and this is an opportunity for the city to become engaged, and I'm very pleased with what the developer has brought to the table. And the discussion that we've had really made me feel comfortable about the services and the plans for the redevelopment of this property. It gives me a lot of hope for James Crossing in the future. I want to thank you all for your, your investment in there, your proposed investment in the property, and, and I would urge council to support this. As Chair of the Housing Authority, this is not a committee of the city, so I will move to, to, I will move the resolution forward, and that will require a second, Madam Mayor.
All right. All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion from Councilmember Perro? Councilmember Wright?
No, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking forward to voting for it.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion from anyone? I will also like to recognize Mr. French here this evening with us. I know he traveled in from out of town, and so you've sat through an evening of dialogue. Is there anything as a part of staff presentation?
Oh, no, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, please cast your vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wilder had stepped out. Thank you. Please cast, yeah, it's a vote for the...
How do you do that? That was quick.
Oh, thank you very much.
I pushed the wrong button.
No, no. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to it. Thank you. All right. Next is consideration of adopting an ordinance to regulate the use of shared mobility devices such as electric power-assisted scooters, skateboards, bicycles, et cetera, within the city. Staff will provide a presentation, and I will turn to Mr. Erwin.
Since it's late, I'll try to be brief. As a result of the influx of these electric devices throughout the state, earlier this year, the General Assembly passed legislation authorizing local governments to adopt ordinances requiring companies that put these devices out for public use to get a permit from the locality before doing so. The legislation provides that if the locality has not adopted such an ordinance by the end of the year, the companies can go ahead and put out these devices without permission from the city. Council discussed this draft, the first draft of this ordinance at its meeting in November, made a number of suggestions. The ordinance has been revised to reflect council's comments. Some of the examples are, we took out the data sharing requirement that would require the companies to provide the city with certain data. We clarified the ordinance to make it clear that it only, it doesn't apply to normal bicycles, only electric rental bicycles. The ordinance was, a definition of geo-fencing was added to the ordinance to explain what that means. The ordinance made it clear that it only applies to companies that are setting out their devices for use on public property, that it does not apply to devices, companies that only set out devices for use on private property like college campuses. And provision was added, making it an offense to operate a shared mobility device on a sidewalk or street while wearing headphones, texting, or being under the influence of a controlled substance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Erwin, and yes, Councilmember Wright.
Madam Mayor, I think I really appreciate the diligent work of Mr. Erwin and, and the city team to, to get this ordinance in front of us in such a timely fashion, given that we have to adopt an ordinance, or we don't have to adopt an ordinance certainly, but, but given that the, the state requires that if we want to regulate it, we have to get an ordinance in place by the end of the month in order for us to actually be able to regulate these devices, should they come to our community. I would be in favor, I don't actually have any, I thought that the amendments that the team made after our last meeting were sufficient to address my concern certainly, so I would be, I'd like to move the motion that we adopt this ordinance as presented.
All right. The motion has been made in second, and Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have nothing to add to it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Haggelson.
I'm just wondering, you know, I see that on here, Mr. Erwin had added, it says a provision was added, making it an offense to operating, which I don't, to operate, I think, is what it's supposed to state, a shared mobility device on a public sidewalk. So adding, you've added things to it. Is that what this is saying? Making it an offense. I don't think our, I mean, some of this, I realize it's, it's probably neat and it's good, but adding it, I don't foresee our police officers pulling over somebody on a little scooter and saying, "Oh, my goodness." So I, so adding these kind of things, I appreciate you adding them, but I thought we wanted to make it as minuscule as possible, because you say that you have a provision was added, making it an extra offense to ride on the sidewalk wearing headphones.
If I make a mayor's phone, which is just that, that had been, I think, the conversation that council been having about that these were concerns with the original ordinance that was presented, that these actually were not, it was strongly discouraged for people to do these things, but not that it was a legal offense to do these things. And so I think, so that was, that was, that was my feedback, and I, I, I thought at the time that other people shared that concern, that maybe you shouldn't have people riding down the street with earbuds in, especially if they're going to be interacting with other vehicles, right? I mean, if you're driving a car, you can't have earbuds in, and if you're going to be on a public right-of-way, you probably ought not also to have earbuds in so that you can, you know, so you can interact with traffic safely.
I just, I mean, have it as an offense. I mean, you know, maybe we could, I mean, if there's something later, I mean, making it an offense. I just, I just, you know, I mean, I, again, we had a long discussion about our police officers are, got lots of things to go after evil. I don't think somebody cruising down at 14 miles an hour maximum speed on a little scooter is going to be one that we want to, you know, be devoting resources attacking, making sure that it's not a violation.
I would, I would just have to say, this was added at the suggestion of some of the council members as a result of the last discussion, and I would say, I think this is a public safety issue. I came, working on the ordinance, I came across a report from Consumer Reports.
And so that is something that we could add later if it is something, but I think...
But I want to, let me, please let me finish. I came across a report from Consumer Reports. It said that 47 cities have reported since the fall of 2017, when these scooters showed up, over 1,500 accidents, and many of those accidents involve people on scooters hitting pedestrians as they try to share the sidewalks. So from a public safety standpoint, you don't want people riding these devices with texting or earphones or being under the influence, and I do think it's appropriate for our police officers. We don't allow people to operate these types of devices, devices with wheels and runners other than bicycles and motorcycles on the public streets for safety reasons. So I do, don't think there's anything inappropriate about saying we would like our police officers to make sure people don't do these things, but that is certainly council's call.
Mr. Erwin, may I ask, can you describe the, if somebody were to be, if this offense were to be included, what the, what would the punishment be?
Okay. The punishment is, at this time, just a fine. It is a class three misdemeanor, which is a fine of up to $500 in the discretion of the court. There's no jail time or, or other penalty for that.
Any further discussion?
And too, I guess to further go on that, I mean, there's lots of things, you know, I was talking to somebody about a sidewalk issue, and we talked about sidewalks required being developed today. You know, I see some places in the city where everybody parks their car on a sidewalk. And we have a law against it. I mean, but when we have laws against something that is never enforced, or, so now we're going to charge somebody $500, is this now only going to be somebody's going to be charged $500 if they're using a shared mobility device, or if somebody buys their own scooter and uses it? Because this is a shared mobility device, power-assisted scooter ordinance, so if it's not a shared device, it's my own. Yeah, I mean, I just, I thought we were going to kind of tread kind of lightly on this, you know, because there's lots of benefits for it, and I think there's, you know, we can kind of see as things happen and, and progress as opposed to saying, "Wow, let's stop it even before it comes." So I just, I got a feeling it's, it's, it's going to be a little overreach, especially when you're driving a $1,000 scooter and you get a $500 fine because you had, you know, some earbuds in.
Yeah, but if the city doesn't impose a fine...
The city would just, an officer would issue a citation, and just like many other offenses, the court would decide what the appropriate fine would be, not the city, so...
Litigating over somebody riding with little scooters and, you know, so anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting this. I think it's important to get an ordinance on the books prior to the deadline. It may not be perfect, but as, as the city attorneys indicated, we can certainly change it and tweak it once we have some more situations, some situations that actively arise. I in no way see that we would be tasking our police officers to engage people wearing headphones or, or riding these things unless maybe they see them in passing or whatnot, but I'm certainly, wouldn't think it'd be a call. I do think it's a good protection and an opportunity in case someone else gets injured by somebody doing this, then there's an opportunity for the police to charge them with, with improper use of the vehicle, or whatever it is, a shared mobility vehicle. So I think this is okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes six to one. Next is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city, federal, state aid fund budget and appropriate $215,474 with resources from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Social Services through the Employment Advancement for Temporary Assistance for Needy Families or TANF Participants Community Wealth Building Grant. Mr. Hughes will provide this presentation to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. What Madam Mayor just read is the crux of my presentation. I will say that the idea for expansion of poverty reduction strategy includes, but is not limited to, the Higher Lynchburg Initiative partnership with the Lynchburg Office of Economic Development and Tourism, as well as other job readiness, training, and internships with local stakeholders and direct intervention with eligible City of Lynchburg residents. And this did go to finance earlier today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and as Mr. Hughes just stated, it did go to the finance committee today, and so I'll defer to our chairman of the finance committee, Councilmember Haggelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we're all delighted that Mr. Hughes was awarded another successful grant, and we look forward to how utilizing this grant will actually see fruit on the tree and have lower poverty.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding this? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next is consideration of approving a support resolution for Holiday Lake 4H Educational Center to the Commonwealth of Virginia for funding capital improvement projects, and I will turn to Ms. Vercheck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Preston Wilson, the president and CEO of Holiday Lake 4H Education Center is requesting support of the resolution as part of its application to the General Assembly for $332,000 in essential capital safety improvements. in essential capital safety improvements. The 4H Educational Center serves 19 Virginia localities, 19 Virginia localities, and many have supported this resolution, and we ask that city council do the same.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to, to consider approving a support resolution for Holiday Lake? Councilmember Perro?
Madam Mayor, this is a very good, local, convenient spot for, for all Lynchburg families to visit in Appomattox. I see no reason not to support this. It supports recreation in our area, and the opportunity for some people to get outside that may not have the ability otherwise. I think, I think this is a good, good thing to support.
All right. Thank you.
I'll make that motion in a second.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Wilder. Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Vercheck.
Madam Mayor, just before the meeting is adjourned, I need some guidance on where you want to hold the public hearing on January 14th so that we can plan appropriately.
I personally am for holding the meeting here in council chambers for the purpose of the viewing audience, for taping. I think tonight, our staff have done a good job with the crowd, and I think anyone that wants to come, we have ample space to do it here, as well as have the overflow room continue. So I will remind people that if they want to speak, they have to present their request to the clerk, Ms. Robin.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing, so they can just show, okay, yes. So I would still say that I want this here in council chambers. That's my personal perspective.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perro?
You know, I'll defer operationally to staff. You know, just, what have you, what have, what have you seen? What do you, what do you think? What's easiest for you all to potentially manage? It's an operational issue. I don't think it's a policy issue.
That's fine. I'll consult with the police department.
And I imagine that any other place that they have it, and I appreciate your, the television. I know we've had meetings at GLTC, that our local camera folks came and they recorded and broadcast, so wherever it's held, wherever they think they can have security.
We can only broadcast live from here.
Right. We can only broadcast live from this facility.
I believe we can only broadcast live from here.
And so the other ones are delayed, taped delayed, or?
Yes.
Okay. So it could be done, you know, the one thing I do, would request is, you know, are public schools by, you know, kind of by default are no gun zones? And so, you know, gun-free zones?
That's true.
Which is, I've voiced my concerns when we have meetings there. I don't like it. I don't like to have a target on our back that says, this is where you go. So if we have other places that aren't in a gun-free zone, that would be my preference. So if we can have it a place, a large place that could host it, January 14th, Liberty University won't be back in school yet, if need be. I could get a, the fine arts there. We could have the Academy of Music, probably have it right here downtown. There's places that would probably have ample room that aren't gun-free zones that we could have ample opportunity. So that would just be my suggestion.
And thank you, and I appreciate everyone's suggestion. I still would like to weigh in with staff that I want it here in city council chambers. That's my personal perspective for the viewing audience, the ability to go live with the dialogue and the discourse from our council chambers, which is a nonpartisan and just a local body, public building. And so that's my public weigh-in on that, and...
We do have two other public hearings currently scheduled for that night, so I just want to make you aware of that as well.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.